Okay. Then we'll move on to the long-term transportation. Mr. City Manager?
You betcha. Thank you, sir, and good evening, everybody. We have the opportunity, do we need to do anything on the ...
Yeah, Zach is on the other end of that phone, I believe, so if you don't mind, I'll just unmute and ...
Okay. No, please, please. That sounds really good.
Zach, can you hear us all right? A little bit of an intro, so.
Right, absolutely.
Nice to make sure we got audio.
Hi, Renee. We can hear you.
Wonderful.
Zach just stepped out for a quick second, but he'll be back shortly.
Okay. Is the screen up? Because all I see is some round heads.
It will be, let me just share our screen quickly.
Just want to make sure everything works, and then I'll let the city manager do a little intro to the council and sit back in my chair. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Renee. We had the opportunity tonight to kind of have a final presentation, if you will, with respect to the long-range transportation plan and an opportunity for you to ask questions and understand the analysis and gather some information as it relates to what the recommendations are, really. And so we are favored to have the consultants on the phone here with us today. They're going to walk us through the presentation, as I understand it. And again, as I mentioned, please ask questions. Take the opportunity to understand the data and to walk through the conversation, and I think you'll find that this is a pretty thorough citizen-based analysis that hopefully will put together a really good plan for us moving forward. So Liz, did you want to add anything before we take off with the consultants?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Honorable Mayor, members of council, the long-range transportation plan is started, as you'll hear, in the fall of 2018. And it's an extensive process that has required our federal lending partners for us to receive money for the MPOs, for Metropolitan Planning, which we do a lot with projects, as well as with our transit system. So this process has been very extensive. You all have seen pieces of it. You're going to see tonight the final draft. We do have this logged in. The consultants are out of Los Angeles, and then one of them is currently overseas. So we thought this would be the easiest to do this interaction tonight. And I know Renee Hardy's worked with them to get this queued up, so we'll have the technology available. Pam Jones has been instrumental with this process. But I also wanted to introduce, point out, a couple of our dignitaries this evening. The honorable Mayor, Patrick Ford from Barnum, who sits on our policy committee. Will be reviewing this with the policy committee, along with Councilman Hopkins and Manager, I always say Manager, Carter, Napier.
Nice to meet you.
That just doesn't flow. Manager Napier. Okay, it does. For next week. We also have our Natrona County Commissioner, the Honorable Paul Bertollio here, and he is also on the committee. But then I also wanted to introduce Mark Ayen, who is the interim district engineer for YDOT. He is also, YDOT is on our policy committee, and that position has previously been filled with Lowell Cleaner, who did retire the end of this last year. So I would please and thank you, gentlemen, for all taking the time to be here as part of this public process and to weigh in on this final draft. So with that, now we'll hear from the consultants. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Liz, for that. Can everyone hear us okay?
Sounds good. Yes.
All right. So thank you for having us today. And then just so, getting started. So the name of the plan is Connecting Crossroads, which is a three-decade horizon guiding document for transportation investments throughout the Casper area. And our planning horizon goes through 2048. This plan is an update of the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, or LRTP, that was published back in July 2014. As Liz had mentioned, developing a long-range transportation plan is a federal requirement that's carried out by the Casper Area MPO, and is meant to prioritize how we should spend funds, considering limited resources for transportation on projects that both best serve community values as well as identify needs going forward. So looking a little bit at our process over the last 15 or 16 months. We kicked off in September 2018 by developing a project brand and met with the various Casper Area MPO committees. And later in fall 2018, we released an online survey to gather community priorities. This survey was also made available in paper at City Hall, as well as on Caspi routes and at pop-up events and various community events throughout the Casper area. Last winter, we shared an evaluation of our framework with the MPO committees for approval based on gathered values to prioritize both projects and conducting our needs assessment based on the existing conditions. In March, we held a number of working sessions at Casper College, open to the public and decision-makers to walk through various network gaps, meet with different advocates, and also charrettes and draw out some different transportation design concepts. Throughout the spring and summer, we collaborated with the MPO and town planners to finalize a list of potential projects based on the public feedback, the different jurisdictional priorities, as well as previous plans that have been developed in the area. In addition, this included some presentations to this city council group, as well as City Hall. Using the evaluation framework, we scored the projects based on various metrics to meet plan goals and assess the potential of projects through the Casper Area MPO's regional growth demand, or travel demand model, based on future growth assumptions that were provided by sitting down with land use planners, as well as the private development community. Throughout the fall, we developed a final preferred scenario that best supports the values that were identified by the public in response to the thistle constraints of future revenue coming in. This includes adjusting priorities based on the MTPs, so the Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program allocations for the coming near-term years, as well as gaining more input from funding and design feasibility from the different city and town planners, as well as some final comments from the committee.
Public engagement was a key component throughout this process as we worked to have multiple touchpoints with the public and with various stakeholders and committees. We met with the MPO's Technical, Policy, and Citizens Committee throughout to help guide the process, as well as to get feedback and sign off on in terms of deliverables. We also had one-on-one meetings with a variety of stakeholders, including the Casper Area Economic Development Alliance, Caspi, the Flat River Trails Trust, the Casper Natroni County Health Department, Wyoming Medical Center, and YDOT. Another key aspect of our public engagement process was the idea of meeting the community where they are. So this included two pop-ups during winter 2018, during the Casper Chocolate Walk, to get input on goals, to hear about mobility needs, and to promote our online survey. And as you can see on the top right photo, wherever we went, the wind followed us. In the spring of 2019, we held a week-long charrette and open house at Casper College with the MPO committees and city council members encouraged to attend. These events were open to everyone with a focus on hearing from subject area stakeholders. So this included meeting with active transportation and transit advocates, meeting with people with disabilities, as well as local planners and YDOT. We wanted to keep the sessions engaging and interactive, so we asked community members to draw out their ideal multimodal network, join us on a bus and a walking tour to look at various pressure points in the system, and to watch our designers sketch out complete street treatments for those locations that we had identified during the audit. Our final presentation was open to the public and received quite a bit of media attention with an article written in Oil City News and also posted on Facebook. And in addition to the events in the spring, we held a pop-up event at the David Street Farmers Market to show some of the analysis we completed and to present potential priority projects. Local press covered our progress and events throughout the process, which included a number of TV interviews, as well as articles in the Star Tribune and Oil City News. We also had a project website, which was constantly updated to drive awareness and to solicit feedback. And in addition, MPO staff was very helpful and very critical in helping create transparency and answer questions throughout the process and to provide updates when we weren't on the ground. With over 400 responses to our online survey, this allowed us to obtain feedback from all parts of the Casper area, from people with diverse mobility backgrounds, ages, employment, and needs. This input memorialized the greatest desired improvements for each area of the transportation network, and it also helped us confirm and readjust project goals that we had drafted early on with the MPO committees. This is the final project goal, these are the final project goals that we agreed upon. These were formed with committee input through a review of previous plans and also to consider consideration the FHWA's framework for LRTPs. Based on survey feedback, one of the main changes we made here was adding ease to Goal Five, so promote affordable and easy mobility solutions. This includes things like better messaging and communication.
So looking at the next step of our planning process, that was the needs assessment, which is essentially conducting an assessment of existing conditions. So this looked at a review of historical population and job growth, commuter mode splits, and economic patterns in the region. We also reviewed Natrona County health data, reviewed available crash and collision data, and historic transit performance data. We considered emerging trends, both locally and nationally. Some of these themes included an aging population that are looking to have more autonomy in terms of their mobility choices than previous generations, as well as trends with younger generations seeking new mobility options linked through emerging technologies. We also analyzed and mapped all of the available collision data to pinpoint pressure points within the system, as well as collision hotspots, as well as the available traffic data to look at the performance of the existing network. Finally, we looked to identify gaps in the multimodal network, i.e. pedestrian and bicycles. This included mapping of the existing conditions, identifying where gaps occur, and qualitative observations that we conducted in the field and also what we received from various community members in our workshop. Some of these things related to pedestrian issues include long and exposed crossing distances, indirect passive travel, obstructed visibility, and a lack of ADA provisions in some locations, as well as a general lack of consistency in the network. Similar to what we observed and heard from the bicycle community and on the ground is a general lack of consistency in the network. So there's very few productive facilities. However, there is a robust off-street trail network. So we got a lot of feedback in terms of being able to improve connectivity to the system that's already there. And then in general, we heard this from all users of all modes, just a general issue with driver education and respect, so that's both between motorists and pedestrians and bicyclers.
Our project evaluation consisted of a four-step process. First was screening projects. So we developed a list, a comprehensive list of transportation projects, which we gathered through reviews of past plans and with the help of stakeholder and community input. Next, we worked with various MPO committees to develop an evaluation framework to score potential projects. So here's an example of what our scoring matrix looks like. This framework included a comprehensive list of metrics tied to the five LRTP goals we had established and objectives from the FHWA process. Each project on our list was scored for each metric based on the available project descriptions and through a qualitative analysis, which we conducted in GIS, based on the project's location. For sub-three, projects were then assigned to two growth scenarios to analyze the future network performance within the Casper area travel demand model. So here we have the compact scenario and the sprawl scenario. The compact scenario focused on infill development, which is in line with the generation Casper's vision. And the sprawl scenario allowed some infill, but focused more on growth along the edges of the Casper area, which is more in line with the status quo. This exercise looked at where growth was likely to occur with an additional 50,000 people. This is an example of one of the maps that we brought to the work sessions with land use planners and private developers. use planners and private developers, where they helped us identify where population and employment growth could occur, or places that we're already seeing a lot of growth. This information was paired with the land use data we had gathered during our plan review process and inputted into the travel demand model. Some key takeaways from the model were that the model predicts more travel all around compared to the base year. In terms of average speed, it decreased in both scenarios. The model also predicted an increase in both the vehicle miles traveled and the vehicle hours traveled, with some of those rates almost doubling in the sprawl scenario. What this means is that people are spending more time in their vehicles. As I mentioned earlier, we used the MPO's travel demand model, and some additional findings are that travel time only has a small effect on the destination choice, and that's probably because in sure regions, trips are fairly quick. Local traffic does not jump on and off the freeway as it does in some other places to save travel time as much as the model would predict. And the total base year model of the MPO is correct, but the scenario comparisons are valid at the regional level, however, forecasts for particular roads are less certain. Once we released the scored prioritized projects in the summer, we developed a final list of recommended projects that were based on the feedback we received, projections of future funding, and discussions with planning staff on the near-term feasibility of the video projects. The list of projects also took into account the funding allocations that were made in the MPO's 2020 to 2023 MTIP, as well as YDOT's STIP, which is the Statewide Transportation Improvement Program.
So, our final list of recommended prioritized projects includes 56 different capital improvement projects to be considered for future incorporation in the MTIP process. The project types include complete streets projects that support access and safety for all users, multimodal improvements that would enhance connectivity and safety for bicycles and pedestrians, intersection improvements that reduce conflict points and potential hotspots that we identified in our crash analysis, roadway construction that either provides increased vehicle connectivity through new connections, or an increase in vehicle capacity, and finally, bridge improvements that both replace deficient bridge structures, as well as the I-25 marginal replacement through Casper. And these items are nearing their physical lifetime to ensure the existing system performance. Critical to our final list of recommendations for projects is an equitable distribution of projects throughout the Casper area, so not just the city of Casper, as well as balancing the model needs and different priorities of different users. This also includes considering the business community, as well as logistics, so goods movement, and the needs of the Casper Natronia County International Airport. The project plan is broken off into near, medium, and long-term phases through the year 2048. One change to note from the draft that you may have reviewed that was circulated is a third component of the I-25 marginal replacement through Casper. Based on our discussions and feedback from YDOT reviewing the plan, we moved this to the near-term phase, as it's included in the statewide transportation improvement program in years that occurred after the Casper Area's current MTIP. This was able to cover it from a reserve of maintenance money that we left. Those estimates were based off of the two other I-25 projects. And in general, these amounts cover estimates. One thing to note is that in addition to the capital projects, we allocated over half of the money to asset management, so this includes maintenance and preservation of the roadway network. And these amounts cover the estimates developed of historic and allocated roadway maintenance and preservation spending by the different MPO area jurisdictions that have been laid out in the current MTIP. Additional money was set aside, considering that we would be adding new roadway to the network and the idea that maintenance costs will likely increase over time. This is done in accordance with prevailing best practices nationally, as well as the input that we got from the Infrastructure Subcommittee, where many members noted the importance of being able to maintain what is already on the books for the existing network. And then finally, all of these estimates for both the capital projects and the asset management plan are in line with the projected future revenues that would come into the Casper area as estimated by MPO staff. And then just a quick little breakdown of the type of capital projects that are allocated. So, 60% of that money is going to go to roadway construction. However, one thing to note is that a lot of the kind of complete streets are multimodal improvements. A lot of them are allocated near-term, as they provide a lot of bang for bucks, so they're going to be a lot less costly than roadway reconstruction or new roadway networks, but we're able to bring them in sooner than later. And a lot of those are the ones that we really got robust feedback, positive feedback from the community. And then in addition to capital projects and asset management, we also provided a number of ideas for supportive policies and programs that would align to better implement the LRTP recommended projects in accordance with principles of smart growth and complete streets. Some of these strategies address growth and development policies, transit, health, equity, and vulnerable users, as well as safe routes programs for both seniors and schools. And then in addition, we included in our final document a section on best practices for complete streets design in the context of the Casper area. This information was included upon request to offer appropriate ideas for traffic calming and improving roadway safety for all users. This content is meant to be advisory-only, however, given going forward, local jurisdictions in coordination with YDOT should work together to discuss their preferred design considerations, such as lane width, and to develop potentially a recognized street design guideline for either the Casper area or the city of Casper. Where possible, we tried to identify where similar treatments have already taken place in the Casper area. So, we do get feedback sometimes that, oh, you can't do this here, but we actually found a lot of these elements have already actually been built in the Casper area throughout the community. And then the last part of the LRTP process is the ability to provide performance measures. So, we provided performance measures that are used to indicate how well the transportation system is meeting agency goals and community expectations laid out in the plan. This is just one example of the performance measures that can be looked at going forward for our goal two, which is to approve, proving safety and health for all residents. And then one item to note for the final draft is the plan. Based on feedback that we got from FHWA, we'll be adding a additional appendix item that looks at Casper Area's progress towards existing performance measures. And then finally, the purpose of this LRTP is not to sit on a shelf, but rather to inform the implementation of regional decision-making. The final project list is designed to help the MPO's process in developing the MTIP and allocate funding for projects that are ready to move forward, where the next step is design, engineering, and construction. From this process, we have outlined the document that provides them with justification to identify projects that meet community priorities, technical analysis that observe potential need, as well as the feasibility of long-term funding and fiscal constraints. And that's where we are with our final update on the plan. We'd love to receive any questions or comments from the group. So, Liz and Renee, so I just want to make sure, so right now it's really, this is a core time to give us feedback for any changes and things that would be needed at this point.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might. I note that you, from the last time that this was presented to us here at City Hall, I note that you have placed what you call the East Belt Loop Road, your designation RC-20. I believe that would be a connection from southeast Wyoming Boulevard out to Hat 6. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm, other than the cost, which is obviously because it's a longer distance of road than a lot of these other little projects that you have, why did you assign such a low priority to that? It seems to me that that's a real high priority, and that it strangles a lot of traffic in the southeast corner of Casper in the whole county here, and also has a very negative impact on potential growth of the city in that direction.
Yeah, so this is definitely one thing that's come up a lot. In terms of the East Belt Loop, this is something that has been studied pretty heavily, including previous study by YDOT rather recently. In the project plan, we do kind of include a breakdown of the pros and cons of the project. In terms of community feedback, we received lots of negative comments on the project in terms of ability to address future demand in another way. One of those may be widening of southeast Wyoming Boulevard. And then, of course, lots of concerns with potential impact on the environment, as well as the areas around that. In terms of growth, our analysis would show that this is more geared towards a sprawl scenario that increases Casper city growth away from the inward growth policies that are outlined in the Generation Casper Comprehensive Plan. However, we did not want to remove this project at all, because we know that it is, going forward, a very big ticket item in terms of redistributing those trips and future demand. So, that's why it's still included, but it's moved down in priority from the previous LRTP process. And our deal with including it in the long-range phase is that the LRTP is something that's going to be constantly updated over a four- or five-year period, so it would be appropriate that that's something that is going to be studied a couple of times before it actually would get built.
Well, I would respectfully say that that project has been studied to death since the 1970s, and it's been on virtually every transportation plan, and frequently with higher priorities than this, but I guess that you people were swayed in this direction, and so probably not much chance of swaying you back in a different direction, so.
One thing to note is that, and this is kind of in discussions that were going on with the different committees and also working out the funding, is that it was discussed that the project would be dropped entirely, and we felt that that just wouldn't be appropriate, given the amount of studies that has occurred with it, that it still needs to remain on the books as an item that, you know, should be considered and looked at for the long-term vision. But in terms of, you know, the near or medium-term priorities, we just don't feel that it really makes sense, also from a financial perspective. And then one thing to note in terms of the near-term window, so we're talking 2020 to 2026, is a lot of the money that is allocated to that, those projects, is already eaten out by projects that have been allocated in the municipal transportation improvement program and statewide transportation improvement program. So, there's not really enough money for a huge roadway expansion project to be covered in those near-term years.
Well, I guess we'll just agree to disagree. Every single thing that you just now said is an echo of what was said back in the 60s when this project was first conceived. People said, oh, Casper will never grow, there'll never be that much traffic, there'll never be a need for Wyoming Boulevard, and guess what? It's a very busy road now. I think the same thing would apply to that East Belt Loop. But like I say, and I don't intend any disrespect to you, but you are an echo of exactly what people said back then about Wyoming Boulevard, the whole concept.
Right. And I mean, the idea is we're not saying, I think we are looking more long-term, so it is included in there, and under a fiscally constrained plan, the way we've allocated is that it would be possible to be built in the future. So, it's not being taken off the books entirely.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this, this has been studied a long time, kind of came to a head within the last two years, and one of the biggest issues is, as I recalled anyway, was getting landowners that were going to have their property divided, and so putting it kind of at a later date may have some advantages for us in being able to have several years to work on property acquisition, or perhaps realignment. So, I think it's still an important project, but that was a pretty hot topic for a while.
Yeah, and part of that is we reviewed a number of letters that the MPO has received, not just as part of the LRTP, but over the years from different landowners that are just very concerned about either the effects that that project would have in terms of displacement, or just the general environmental impact.
Any other questions from the council?
I wonder, yeah, any questions you might have for Mr. Mayor?
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So, we're being asked to approve basically the plan, and all of the municipalities would ask to take similar action, is that what we're being asked to do tonight, and then send it on to MPO for implementation?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that, I think is a very good summation of what our next steps are.
And then, Your Honor, it'll come back after we're formal adoption by this body.
I'll just comment that I like the idea of trying to address sprawl and see if we can consolidate and utilize land within our city limits, particularly our downtown core, which appears to be one of the goals of this long-range plan. Any other comments? Move on to the next Historic Preservation Strategic Plan, follow me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council was gracious enough to allow for this topic to be brought forward in another work session setting in light of some pretty significant complaints that were brought forward by a citizen the last time that this plan was proposed to the council for formal adoption. If you will recall, we had a citizen come forward and alleged some concerns with respect to the document potentially being elitist, or forgetting the histories of a number of our segments of our community, many of which would be minority segments and so on. In preparation for this discussion tonight, as a follow-up to that conversation, and again, with regard to council tabling the matter versus voting the plan down, I set out to do some homework and some evaluation of what the plan discussed, and its purposes and motivations, and everything else. As a part of that process, I had the opportunity to visit not only with the citizen who had posed those concerns, with the help of Councilman Pacheco, thank you, sir, for that, but also the opportunity to visit with the Historic Preservation Commission, a representative of which we have here tonight. I had the opportunity to visit with staff again to help me walk through many of these tenants and ideas, and I had the opportunity to visit with the author and consultant, who also gave me a lot of insight with regard to the plan. You probably found, as much as I did, in reading the plan, that indeed, many of the common themes that we read throughout the plan are that of expanding the scope of what we know, as you would see demonstrated on this exhibit that we have in front of you tonight. The dots that you see on the map are with regard to properties and sites that have had survey activities conducted on their behalf. survey activities conducted on their behalf. This does not represent all the information that we believe the state has with regard to historic properties in our community, but rather is a snapshot in time in regards to what we have record of and potentially what is digitized here within our knowledge base here locally. The areas that you see that are kind of salmon-colored or pinkish-colored, whatever that is, those are districts that were created many years ago that have historic relevancy to our community and have had certain studies done and so forth that establish those boundaries. None of these representations on this map is meant to conclude that this is all of the historic property that is available within our community, but rather, again, more of a snapshot in time. And when you read this exhibit, in concert with respect to the discussion in the plan, you will find that we are being invited, as a community, to expand the graphical representation that you see here by reaching out to the community and finding other historic properties and places that might exist within our community and the larger community that we all have the pleasure of living in. So I would suggest to you that the common theme that you read throughout the plan is not a complete gathering, but rather an invitation to expand what we know with regard to historic properties and places in our community. In my estimation, the plan encourages us to add more dots to this map, as well as more dots to the map of other parts of our community that have historic value to our community. There's a couple pieces of the plan that I printed off in order to kind of strengthen what it is that I would suggest is a common theme throughout this document. For example, on page 22, under the goal of developing a surveyed plan, the goal directs us to areas of our community that have high concentration of historic resources and develop a plan to efficiently document these areas, which could include, as this continues to read, "Depression-era New Deal projects, i.e. WPA and CCC resources, cultural influences of immigrants and minorities," which could also include Scandinavian builders and African-American history. It also suggests that additional survey themes could include North Casper and the mixed industrial residential area east of downtown near the railroad tracks, both neighborhoods of which were identified as being underrepresented in the plan. This, to me, would suggest that we recognize that and would suggest those areas of being some target areas of concentration. I also read on page 27, with respect to, again, another portion of goals that the plan attempts to try to accomplish, the narrative says, "To allow for more public participation, to meet in a location that accommodates larger numbers of individuals so that we can engage residents and property owners in researching and nominating resources for designation." This is just exemplary in my mind of the theme, again, that you read throughout the plan over and over again, to try to attract knowledge and information that identifies additional dots on these maps so that we can expand our understanding of the cultural assets and historic places that we have in our community that we don't currently know about or that we could learn more about. So while there certainly was some significant concern as it relates to what was, I think, viewed to be a limited document, I would suggest that the document instead invites community participation, invites engagement of our residents who can bring knowledge to the table that we currently don't have in order to expand our understanding of what cultural assets and historic assets we have in our community. I would suggest that by taking this to the floor, again, which I would hope we can do, and voting this down would actually do way more to stifling the process of trying to understand what other historical assets we have in our community and probably freeze that process for a long time instead of trying to expand what we know and find those structures that we can hopefully have a better hand in preserving into the future. The other thing that voting the plan down would do would be eliminating our opportunity to gather funding resources that would help us to do the, you know, accomplish the goals that this plan sets out to do. So my recommendation is, yes, let's take it back to the floor, but I really hope we can pass this plan and gather some of the facilities and buildings and relics that are in our community that even our citizen brought up in her discussion with the council so that we can get those dots on this map and better preserve our history for our grandchildren to enjoy into the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments?
Yeah, just really quick. Carter and I met with the Concerned Citizen about it and had a good conversation. I think she certainly had legitimate concerns that were hers, but I think once we had the conversation, let her know what the meaning behind what we were doing, what that, what this was all about, we had an opportunity to really kind of delve into that, it laid her fears and made her feel that she was heard, number one, but number two, that we understood where she was coming from and that this plan wasn't in any way trying to intentionally do anything like that. And so I think Carter did a nice job of really making sure that that was expressed and communicated to her. And so I do encourage that we can move forward with that and try to have that dialogue was good and have that conversation, I think, would be good, and then we can move forward to pass it.
Go ahead.
No, I just think we should go ahead and pass it.
I guess what concerns me a little bit is, in the summary of the memo, it says, "The purpose of the Historic Preservation Commission differs significantly from the Natrona County Historical Society." And it appeared that a lot of her concern was actually more on the Historical Society part of it because their history wasn't provided there. But yet, on page 42 of this plan, we start into a long dissertation in history, which, to me, seems a little bit counterproductive as well to the goals of the preservation plan, is that if the Historical Society is supposed to provide the history, let's let them do the history and we stay out of the history business, which solves her issues as well for a big standpoint.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond. Counselman Cathy, you make an excellent point as it relates to the distinction between the Historic Preservation Commission and the Natrona County Historical.
Society.
Society, thank you. Thank you very much.
I had to go back because I was having the same issue.
I was about to twist, yeah, exactly. Thank you for that help. Historic preservation is only intended to capture facilities in our community that have historic value and preserve them into the future. You're completely right, that the Society is more oriented to developing the historic narrative for our community. Would you agree, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I completely concur with you, and if indeed the plan has elements of that that are, that would appear to kind of conflict with its purpose, I don't think it was intended to delve into another committee's mission and agenda, but maybe to make a point with regard to the importance of some of these facilities in our community. Kind of give a background. I think so, I think so.
But that was my concern is, you know, starting on page 42 of that document, it starts into literally the history of Casper with historic themes and context, exploration and migration, talks about the building of the bridges and to serve the influx of ferries. That, to me, is not preservation, that's history.
Narrative.
Yes, it's a narrative on history, which is what the Historical Society is supposed to be doing, I would think, based on that comment that was in the cover letter presenting it to us.
Sure.
And it continues on for 10, 15 pages. It's about the oil and literally a history.
Counselman, you go.
I agree with much of what Counselman Cathy has just said, but I look at that, and I think it's kind of a neat little backdrop and a background to this because if somebody were to only pick up this plan, they might think, well, Casper doesn't have any history, why do we need to worry about any of this? If they were not aware of the things like the Historical Society and all that kind of thing. I think it's real cool to have that in there, to kind of set a backdrop and say, hey, we do have some values here that.
Counselman Powell.
Well, it's interesting how people read these things differently, and I agree that there may be a little mission creep here, but I was, I just want to compliment whoever put that history together because I've read on history of this community, and that's the most thorough, concise review of what's happened here that I've ever come across. And so I don't know if it was the consultant that put together or if it was the historical members of the commission that put it together. I think it provides a context for how these assets came to be. And I think if it, to me, it's a teaching document, and if it helps people understand that we live in a very special place that has a unique history and that these structures that we were just used to driving by without really thinking about where they came from or how long they've been there or who put them there, I think that's a very cool thing. And so I thought the document was very well done, and maybe there is a little bit of overlap in terms of mission, but any chance we, any opportunity we have, in my opinion, to educate the public about the importance of the history of this community, I think is a good thing.
Counselman Hopkins.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Charlie's saying. I think it may be a little off-target for what the purpose of the document is, but I think it's a really good piece of background. As a matter of fact, I've already printed it out, and I put it with my T.A. Larson History of Wyoming book, an original copy, and the history of Wyoming, or the history of Natrona County book, so I stuck it in the back.
That's just because you're old.
Pardon?
You're old.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments?
I have a first edition of T.A. Larson's book.
Well, I appreciate the point you have about that section of the plan, and I would say that that's not something that crossed my mind. I think that section of the plan wasn't intended to have any redundancy with what the Historical Society set out to do. And I think you're right, Counselman Powell, it's, it provides a little bit of context so that with regard to that public outreach that is our desire as the Historic Preservation Commission, if someone, you know, in a citizen of Casper was willing to pick that up or desired to pick that up and say, I don't have any past knowledge or context with regard to Historic Preservation Commission and what our goal is and what our purpose is, that little bit of history of Casper is something that can clue them in and hopefully inspire them to, you know, what our goals are as the Historic Preservation Commission. It's a concise, you know, summary of the history of Casper that is put in there for context, so.
Any other comments?
So we need to move, move to take this back to the board.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, we would recommend that it be brought up in the next regular business meeting, if that's possible, and remove it from the table and give council another crack at reviewing it on a formal basis.
Good with that?
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to ice plants.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a project that, for all intents and purposes, has been discussed for multiple councils now, and we believe we are at the point and sort of a juncture in the road where we're going to need some more conversation from you as it relates to this project yet again. For those of you that have read the memo, you probably picked up on the fact that this project doesn't have many good answers and is not one of those kinds of situations that I really relish bringing to the council for your consideration because I like to give you good answers and much more positive answers and so forth than what this situation represents this evening. The bottom line is, we, as you read the memo, we have an ice plant facility in our ice arena that is probably five to 10 years beyond its useful life. It certainly has exhibited a number of characteristics that would indicate to us that it is, you know, reaching an opportunity to permanently malfunction and require some significant replacement and repairs in order to make it extend for another year or two. So the question that we have before you tonight is whether or not you have the tolerance to move forward with this project, make the ice plant replacement happen, which, as you know, involves, at least in the recommendation that we are preparing for you this evening, bringing the ice plant facility from the event center that is currently dormant and using it to replace our current ice plant, as well as potentially be a facility for a second sheet of ice if council should ever decide to go down that road because it has that kind of capacity. It doesn't come without some significant expense, and as a matter of fact, with regard to the amount of money that we have and the understanding that we had clung to with regard to making this project happen, we're about a million dollars short to get that bad medicine out on the table right now. We, I have asked Mr. Cortez to walk us through some of the finer details of that unfortunate scenario. We've also asked a representative of one of our user groups to be here tonight as well to offer some insights if council sees fit to have those. And we would ask for your direction with regard to one of the three scenarios that we've put together in your memo that, of course, includes doing nothing or moving forward or going forward with a new proposal that would not involve the event center ice plant. So with that, if I could defer to Mr. Cortez, Mr. Mayor, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think, as usual, Carter did a great job of kind of setting the table for that, but I would like to reiterate that this project precedes his tenure here, precedes my tenure as the Parks and Rec Director, so it's kind of one of those things that's handed to us. And as a matter of fact, when it got handed to me, I was kind of like, good luck with that, you know? We just got done, a previous council had turned away all the bids, you know, and basically said, it's too much money. We want to see what other opportunities exist, and that is one of the proposals that we have in front of you tonight. The problem is, is that we're getting eaten up by things like inflation, the fact that we have a plant that is failures imminent. It is leaking, we think. It's so antiquated, you can't tell, but we're putting more Freon into it, and we've exceeded what the EPA would allow us to do on a regular basis, meaning, kind of like, hey, you can't put any more in for, you know, a few more months, and then you kind of recharge it again. Freon, the type of Freon that we use now is the long-term produced, which means it's at a premium now, you know? If we were to lose all the Freon in the current system, which occurred about nine months ago due to a gasket failure, you're talking about $50,000 to $75,000 to replace just the Freon. We just. fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to replace just the Freon. We don't shut down the plant because we're afraid it won't start back up. There's just a variety of things that I've outlined and I've bulletized in the memo for y'all to kind of peruse. As Carter said, there's, there's no good answers, you know. It's just kind of like you find yourself struggling to pick the, the, the best, worst answer, you know, is kind of where we're at. And it's, it's just kind of an unfortunate circumstance. I, one of the things that I got to point out to you as well, we decided to not do anything and to see what other opportunities there are, is the fact that the competitive landscape within the refrigeration and commercial refrigeration world is that by, by doing that previous, you know, they, the council that turned down those bids at that time had no way to know this, but what had happened was is it was already a specialized group of two or three vendors in the entire country that provide this service. What we found out now is, is one of those is fallen by the wayside because they lost critical employees to their operation, so they didn't even bid on this project. What that means is that we're kind of dealing in a monopolistic environment right now so they can charge a premium. And that's kind of what we've come to find out, but what I can't tell you is how that landscape will change in the future, if at all. In the, you know, I guess that's probably where it sits for some of the finer points that Carter kind of threw out at you. I guess I'd take any questions. Or if you want to hear from Mr. Bauer.
Tim, I'm curious if we can just like go over the options again as to what can be done and, and it's, I guess for everybody's understanding, we've all seen the plant down there. We, we know that it, like Tim said, you don't want to shut it off because you're afraid it'll never come back on. And I think that after you go through that, I do want to hear from, from Pat tonight, just to get an idea of, the decision's going to have to be made one way or another. We're going to have to do it relatively soon because this will cut into next season's hockey and figure skating. And there's a lot of user groups that if, if we don't make a decision, or make the right decision, it could like cancel a season here and there, so, but.
Mr. Mayor, well said. So, so I kind of have outlined three, three basic options. It's the most I can come up. There's probably other ones out there, but they're, they just get worse, you know what I mean? So these are probably like the three top options, in really no particular order, but we are short about 1.3 million dollars in the construction phase of the project. So, you know, right now we have about just over a million for the project that's in the budget, but being the bids that we have received, which we have the three bidders, they were all within a tight window, which further lends me to think that the bids are probably good bids, although it was grossly underestimated what would actually be needed to make the project go through. But anyways, obviously, if we want to do it, it's, it requires an immediate infusion of money, to the mayor's point, which to get the project, get legs under it immediately and get the project completed by hopefully the first of November. We need to act fairly quickly, but it does cost a lot of money. Number two, we can reject all the bids and, as we well know, the hockey club has agreed to do a feasibility study for a second sheet of ice. We could just kind of pump the brakes, reject all bids and kind of see what comes out of that study. And then at that time, we don't know what the study will say yet, but, you know, we could see what opportunities exist and what we could do. I'd bulletize kind of what the pros and cons of that are. You know, obviously, there could be something that's a cheaper alternative that comes out of that iteration. And then the third option is reject all the bids and go back to what we had in 2017 when that previous council rejected it, meaning that it's already designed and it's done, which is good. However, that doesn't solve a couple of problems. One of them is, is that we still currently have an ice plant up at the event center that is, lack of better terms, rusting away. It's not rusting because it's brand new, but it's dormant. It's not doing the citizens any service. And we did take money from a very generous family in this community to make that project happen. Agreed, there's probably some due diligence that wasn't done at that time that kind of makes it probably not a good option to ever turn back on again with a $20,000 conversion cost in the amount of programming that already goes in the event center. It's just not really feasible. And then another big thing that I would probably point back to that is once again you have inflation and once again we have the fact that the competitive landscape in that commercial refrigeration area has changed greatly since 2017 and 2016 when this project was first bid out, meaning it's still a monopolistic world and I'm, we have no reason to think that there's more people looking to enter that space to make it more competitive and break prices down. So we kind of have some things working against us, I guess, to summarize briefly, Mayor. Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I, I may have missed that might need some emphasis is that if we do go with either option two or option three, we are very likely going to need to at least replace the condenser in the current unit in order to just simply get us by. And we're not totally sure, if I remember correctly, Tim, that, that, that we're convinced that by replacing a condenser, we will in fact get another year out of that plant. There, there may be other repairs that we need to do, other things that we need to figure out, and certainly accessing that Freon, again, will, will pose its unique challenges as well. So while that certainly appears to have some attraction potentially, I, I would have you remember that, that we, we've still got to get that plant to work for us in order to effectively go, go out to bid in another form or fashion. And so please keep that in mind.
Go ahead. Well, I, I guess I, I kind of prefer, I don't know where we're going to get the money, but I kind of prefer to go with option one. Go ahead and bite the bullet. We've got a plant that we know will run. We know we've got a Freon substitute, if you will, that's readily available for the one we have. And from what I understand, we've also been told that it does have the capacity to in fact do another sheet of ice.
Right.
So if, if we, if we do that, at least we know we've got a little overcapacity. We're putting some assets to work and we're not going to end up in a position getting halfway through the hockey season where we just have to close the doors. Because you'd, you'd get into a little while and, you know, if that thing does go down, you're not going to be able to get Freon. It's, it's, I'm not even sure it's being manufactured in the world anymore. So what there is out there is about all there is. So I just recommend we go ahead and bite the bullet and do option one.
Councilman.
Have we had an explanation as to why the estimated cost is so varied from what the bids came in at, or is that just pure profit because they know they can charge it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, that, that as it sounds, I think it kind of lends itself kind of to the second point you have, which is they're monopolistic. We do believe that they know that they're kind of the only ones bidding on the project. And so instead of it costing, you know, what we're looking at, you know, in three years ago now, you know, they, they know where they sit in that space. It's a small community, so that, you know. But, but I don't have any proof either way. But, but it is, until you actually go out to bid, you really don't know what, what you're going to get back. And then you go out to bid and you get really bad results, we would all consider bad results. At the end of the day, that's still what it is. You know, if I were to rebudget this, if we were to kick the can down the road another year to rebudget the project, I'd still say it's 2.5 million plus dollars that we have to allocate to the project based on what we have as hard data at this point.
Just a quick follow-up. I just want to make sure that this is included in this conversation, especially maybe for individuals watching from home or watching later or reading about it. I mean, we all know like how big the user groups are and how concentrated that time on the ice is. I mean, we always hear stories about these kids going to practice at, you know, 5:00 a.m. and these high schoolers having practice at 10:00 p.m. on school nights. And so, I mean, there are user groups, a lot of them obviously, which this affects. I mean, this isn't just something that, you know, gets used here or there. I mean, it's very competitive to get time on this ice, so it's, it would affect an enormous amount of people.
Councilman Huber.
So, thank you. Option one is basically to complete what we thought we had bought and paid for a year or two ago. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, not really, because over the iterations since 2016, it's been bid out three times now. This last time that, that we bid it out.
But this is what it's going to cost to complete those projects that were brought before, council and everybody on those occasions. Am I, is my memory correct or am I?
I, I would be hesitant to say yes, because to me there are some nuances that are different. I mean, at that time, we didn't think of the, of that being dormant up at the event center. So to us, that was still a viable project.
Yeah, it was just like turn the switch and it'll fire up, as I recall it. The, the other question that I have is, obviously, the plant that's in operation up there at the ice rink right now is old, so I think it's probably generations of, of being outdated. Is the plant that we have at the event center, is that a current generation plant? It's not already outdated, is it? Okay. So, so if we, if we did this 1.3, that would basically move it up there and put it in service. Am I, I think that's probably our best worst alternative.
Councilman Powell.
I agree with Bob. I don't think we really have any choice in this matter. I guess we have to figure out how we readjust our priorities as far as coming up with the funding. But to Kristen's question, I think you guys are being very generous about this. I don't know what we paid this engineering firm, but this reminds me of the Mike Cedar Pool, where we paid somebody a bunch of money to do a study. They should have known the competitive environment that was in, in place and how they could be a more than a million dollars off. It, it's just very frustrating to me that, that we're in that situation and I don't, I don't know. That we should, we should get that money back, whatever we paid them because that, that's just incompetent to be that far off.
Councilman Churchill.
Yeah, that's the same thing. I, I agree with that. And there's two things here that I see that if we move that over to the current facility now, obviously, it's somewhat, you know, obviously, we would like to have a, a better idea or a better opportunity to do something, but move it over there and then down the road, because I do support a second sheet of ice. But I think eventually we need to do that and figure out a way to do it. That's going to be something I, I would definitely want to support. And if this ice plant can definitely support a second sheet, then I think that's a good move. So it just stinks, that's all.
Councilman Beach.
I agree. Something I'm reading here that worries me about it. The ice plant at the event center was badly damaged during a water leak last year. Although insurance is repairing the plant, there could be unknowns that have yet to be realized. As part of the current bid, the contractor is required to do the test at the plant before it moves from the event center. So we're looking at what it's going to cause, correct me if I'm wrong if I'm reading this. We're looking at what it, for a contractor to move it there, but if the current one is damaged, then more repairs, is that going to cost us? I know it says insurance, repair the plant, but is that going to be more cost for us on top of moving it there? And I guess my concern is, how did we have a water leak so bad that it damaged it? That's concerning. So if you don't mind me asking.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that's a great point. It's a little more complex than just kind of the way you laid it out there, meaning, we, it sprayed on various motors and components, meaning the control panel and shorted out stuff, obviously. The, the good thing is that we have an insurance claim on it. And so warm is going to make it, fix it to words 100% again. At least that's, that's the assumption I have to operate under and I would encourage you to as well because that's the purpose of insurance. You know, they're there to say, we're going to, we're not going to fix it 80% of the way. We're going to fix it 100% of the way. My point, I think, in, in those lines that you just read would be is it will take more repairs. The bad thing about, and if I get this wrong, Tracy, let me know, but that thing is warm, whatever we charged as claims to them, they eventually extract that back out of us over a look back period of, you know, three to five years. And so the answer to your question is that if there are more repairs needed, it will cost us more, but in the long term. It, it wouldn't be something where I'm going to come back to you and say, hey, we've identified $300,000 more repairs that we have to come up with on top of the 2.4 million dollars that you're already looking at.
So that wouldn't come back to us?
It wouldn't come back to you directly in a lump sum. It would be in a look back period. And so we're just hoping that these repairs that they've already done are what it needs to be. But kind of back to Councilman Lutz's question, that is kind of the reason why they creep, they increased costs of the project overall that the consultants and no one else could predict, which was that leak, the spray water on the components and shorted them out. So until we fire up the plant, which is part of the contract, which normally would not be in a contract, it costs us more money to kind of have that signature, if you will, that is certified, it's good to go, it's 100% when it leaves the event center. Because the contractor wants to be able to say, if it's broken between the event center and its new resting place, they want to be able to point the finger at somebody to say, hey, that's on you for the way you moved it or something. Does that make sense?
And just picking one follow-up, please. Never mind, it's a case, sorry.
All right, Tim, just to add on to what he said real quick, you would, but the insurance company would still have to certify that it's been repaired and is 100% operational too, correct?
That is part of the contract.
So it'd be actually two certifications, one by the contract and one by the insurance company.
And then I would probably also include the refrigeration folks. So it'll, it'll be a handful of folks that want to make sure that that thing is on point when it, when they finish the repairs up at the event center.
Now, just one quick point. We haven't really talked about it, but it's really not an option to, if the ice plant goes down at the ice rink, it's not an option to reschedule all those people to go up there. We can't afford to take that thing up and put it down every night, so it just can't be done, so.
Councilman Hill.
Couple of questions. Number one, what is the anticipated remaining life of the equipment that's at the event center?
Good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. They, they say that these ice plants, the current one we have was 25 to 30-year lifespan. We're 35 years, so obviously it's, it's overdue. The one that they're saying up there is 20 to 25 years, which we've exceeded five of those years.
So we're looking 15, 20 years.
Correct.
Even though it's been dormant?
Correct.
Well, the question is how many hours we're on it, not how old it is. It, it probably doesn't have 200 hours.
That's what I'm saying.
And I was just going to add, Mr. Mayor, that they do routine maintenance on it to make sure that the package and everything is staying intact. So even though it's dormant, they still go and fire it up once a month and they kind of run through those checks to make sure that it's.
You still have the seals and things, though. The other thing, do you ever anticipate, say, in that 15 to 20 years, do you ever anticipate trying to get ice back at the event center?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy.
And I realize we have no crystal ball. I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I would say that that is, is, is highly unlikely. There certainly will be infrastructure that's in the floor and should council ever want to plug in a plant up there, you know, that, that exists, whether or not that's even feasible, and 10 years down the road, I don't know, but, but it would be highly unlikely that this administration would ever really recommend that as an option.
He's going to need to preserve what's on the floor. Like you say, put a nice plug in.
That's right.
And I guess to piggytail on that, because I think you could probably answer it, Tim, the, most of those shows that come in now, Peanuts and Ice or whatever it might be, they bring their own plants in generally, correct?
Mr. Mayor, you're kind of correct. What they bring is they bring kind of a fake ice product, and it's not even a refrigerator product, you know, it's typically what they use. They, they wouldn't want to use our ice because it's so cost prohibitive, their bottom line, to pay the 20,000 for us to turn on the plant and get it all fired up. So you're correct. They, they do, they are not interested in using our ice.
Councilman Beach.
The question I had earlier, so we have three bids. So I guess my mind goes, a lot of times when we go with the lowest bidder for other projects, we turn around and they come back and they bid it at this much, but then, hey, we found out it's going to cost this much. So they come back and ask us for more money on that stuff and then it continues. So I know the norm is to go with the lowest bidder. I'm hoping that we'll, the bid is close but different. I, I would just like to ask the questions of, why did you bid this and are you more certain? I know you can't see everything, but then to have them come back and go, sorry, we need $500,000. sorry, we need $500,000 more, when the other bidder already anticipated that amount? So I guess I'm just asking that we, with three bids, we actually really consider, who is the best, who's giving us the most accurate, that we're not going to be spending more money down the road?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, I can appreciate where you're coming from. One of the things that we agreed from a staff perspective to do with the possibility of selecting the low bidder is requiring that bidder, that contractor, to go through a very thorough value engineering process that would help us understand ways in which we can bring the cost of the project lower, thereby reducing the subsidy, if you will, to the project's bottom line, which I believe in turn really forces them to anticipate any of those overruns ahead of time and minimize those possibilities. So I think you're on the wavelength that staff is, as it relates to not only bringing down the cost of the project and the subsidy, but also avoiding any of those overruns that taps into that contingency, because at the end of the day, we want to try to preserve this project line as much as possible.
But do you have any other questions, Tim?
Mr. Mayor, I assume, Mr. Manager, you've thought about where this extra money is going to come from? Do we have some choices in front of us now, or do we defer that until later?
Well, I appreciate that question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. One of the philosophical discussions that we have yet to have, or don't have the luxury of having had by now, is with regard to one of the funding sources that I would like to suggest your consideration for. During the budget setting process, back in the spring of 2019, one of the questions that was brought up was with respect to the perpetual care fund. And one of your colleagues asked a question of whether or not that perpetual care fund is meeting the desired intent in the same manner that it was when it was originally organized. I don't know how many of you remember that question and that kind of impromptu discussion. But indeed, we anticipate that when the perpetual care fund is repaid to the extent that it will be, that the corpus of that fund will be in the neighborhood of $30 million. The question that council, if council's comfortable doing tonight, that I would ask is whether or not that type of philosophy is appropriate to consider as a means of covering the cost of this project overrun. So that means fundamentally what I'm asking is whether or not you have the patience and the tolerance to reduce the corpus of that fund in order to cover the cost, excuse me, of this project. So we would effectively be asking whether or not you want to reduce that $30 million by the $1.3 million as a means of taking care of this.
I would be in favor of that, because I think these are special circumstances. If the plant goes down tomorrow, we've got a catastrophe on our hands. And we don't know if it could go down tomorrow and be unfixable. And we've got hockey programs, we've got ice skating programs, we don't have a backup plan for. So I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think this is an unreasonable thing. I think we set the bar very high for hitting the corpus of that fund, but I think this is that serious of a situation, in my opinion.
How do you plan on paying the fund back?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cathy, I don't have a plan to pay it back. We would, I would basically be asking you to reduce that corpus requirement.
And I think, I go back a long time, obviously, and I was on one of the early One Cent committees that gave quite a bit of money to the perpetual care fund. And it dates back to our friend Dick Sadler. And the idea was for that fund to take care of One Cent projects. And this is pretty much a One Cent project. And if we need to pull money out of it, it's obviously going to be more than the interest at this point. But when that fund was started, you were able to get 5% and 6%. And maybe those days will be back again, so I guess I'm a little more optimistic about that. But I still want to maintain the perpetual care fund, but I think this is legitimate use of the funds.
I was going to ask Pat, does anybody want to, Pat, I guess you're here on behalf of Casper Hockey, I would assume, so is there anything you would want to add to this discussion?
I mean, Tim, I appreciate you guys taking the time. You know, I guess the biggest thing that I have to just kind of reiterate, you know, just a couple of quick things, is that, you know, just to point that big image, you know, I talked with an outfit today, they just finished probably the most recent rink. It was in Minnesota. This guy was kind of like in my spot, he helped get the thing going. They're stockpiling free on, and some of the rigs that they own, they have five rigs that they participate in, and they're stockpiling free on. And they have been for about two years because of the limited supply. So, you know, just hitting that back home on that, you know, issue. You know, a couple of things that Bob just said, and, you know, and I guess my biggest thing is, you know, I am a little bit biased in, you know, what I'm here for, for my kids and hockey and I'm involved in that. But I am a member of the community, and I have kids in the community. And I grew up here, and a lot of you guys grew up here and have kids that grew up here and have kids. And, you know, roughly, I think we have about 15,000 to 20,000 kids. I think the number was like 16 something or other kids in our community, 16,000 kids. And we really don't have a place for all of our kids to go during the winter. You know, I know that there's some stuff in the budget right now for, you know, some design stuff for Hogan On, you know, the facility at the rec center was designed for One Cent funding, and it was started from 1974. Originally, that first set of money, I believe, went to the rec center, which was in 1981 or 1982 when that money was first allocated for the rec center. And then there was a lot of private donations. And so, you know, I guess that, you know, the biggest thing is that, you know, when we start to look at One Cent funding and what does that go to? And, you know, it was talking to Tim today, when we look at a $60 million budget over a four- or five-year period, or four-year period over the One Cent funding, you know, how much of that money is going to community projects like this and towards that? In my opinion, you know, we're building brand-new facilities that are housing for our firemen and, you know, police safety and infrastructure of the city, which I can appreciate. But I think that we really need to take a bigger step back and say, what are we doing for our kids long-term? Because those kids are going to be the ones that we stay here. And we need a place for people to move into the community so that we get more One Cent funding. And if we don't have a desired place to bring in, you know, people from out of state or other communities, we really don't have a long-term, you know, economic impact growth for the city of Casper. So, you know, I guess my point is to bring this all home, is to say that, you know, I feel like, you know, grabbing that $1 million or wherever you can find that, you know, I just feel like that, you know, comes back to us long-term. You know, I realize this is, you know, not the desire we want. You know, we don't want to spend $1 million on, you know, you know, Tim used the term the other day when we met, you know, I think the bid's getting juiced up a bit, but unfortunately, we have a lot of red tape to get through when you're, you know, doing a project with the city. You know, if this was me doing this project, would it be 1.5 or 1.6, who knows, you know? So I guess that's really all I have to say. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I was just, I guess for me, it just, when we talk about, I think it's just the thing of, it sticks so funky because of the obviously incorrect initial bid versus actual bids. I mean, I think to some degree, when you're going to infuse this much more money, I mean, I understand that, I think what happened was our initial, whatever, estimate was just improper. And that's unfortunate, because it basically cast this in a light of, you know, it's this huge overrid, and in reality, it was probably what we should have expected from the beginning. We just weren't given a great product by the consultant firm. I think to some degree, though, that it is going to appear, I mean, we do have to make this something that we're committed to then, because if we're going to infuse this much money, then to me, what that indicates is our intention is to make this type of facility and this type of activities a priority. And so I think that it's just to remember, I mean, I don't think this is just one tiny piece. I think this is also very strongly leading into the second sheet of ice that's got in. And then other things that come along with that, as far as maybe seating facilities, so on so forth. And so just maybe to kind of keep that as part of the decision, it's not just moving the plant.
Well, a couple of things that I would say on it is, I don't, I do feel that the initial number that was given to us is obviously low, because you have three bids that came in, and they came in within a couple hundred thousand dollars of each other. So obviously, the cost of doing business is going to be a million dollars higher than what they initially said. Having kids myself that have been through the hockey program, I know the sheet of that, or that state of the ice, and it's lucky it's made it this far. So fixing it, I don't think that fixing it again, and especially with free-on issues, and the moment you start fixing one thing, then that can lead to the next and the next. And before you know it, we put a lot of money into something that is going to cost us just as much to fix an outdated system. I'm not happy about spending another million dollars to bring this down, but at the same time, if you replace the entire system just to run the single sheet of ice, you're probably going to be still a billion and a half, $2 million. And then you have a paperweight that sits up at the event center. So I'm for moving it down, but the thing that I would ask is that whoever gets word to that contract, that, you know, they sharpen their pencil as tight as they possibly can and bring these prices down. The building alone, and I understand that there is a lot that's going to go into this building. You talk about a lot of weight that's going to be sitting on this concrete, so there's a lot that goes in the soils and everything else. But if you look at it, $744 a square foot to build this building, and I think it was like $900,000 if I recall correctly. So to build a building, a 1,200 square foot building, I know there's a lot of reasons behind that, but there's got to be some places that whoever gets the contract can value budget this thing to get that cost down, so it's not such a hit to us. So that's what I would ask if we did.
Councilman Pickle.
That was another question I had, is not only are we talking the 2.6 to move this stuff, we're talking another $900,000 to build a building?
No.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, that's all part of the project.
That's all part of the 2.6?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Then the one thing, as a follow-up to that, and it leads back to Councilman Powell's question, is where's the money going to come from? I like your idea, but I don't like borrowing from Peter to pay Paul without having a repayment plan figured out for Peter. And I guess, and I realize, we can't commit the next council to much, but I would like that those of us that are here, that are advocating to go ahead and use that funding mechanism, take the first, whatever the overrun is, out of the next One Cent project and pay ourselves back. And we could do that over a four-year period, but I would like to see some type of repayment program. Because to me, this is just like borrowing from our 401Ks. We all try to pay them back when you go buy a car or anything else. And to me, that is good fiscal responsibility, is figuring out ways to pay ourselves back when we borrow from ourselves.
Councilman Hugh.
I'm not fond of the fact that this is going to cost us much more than we thought in the first place, but I think that the option of going ahead and paying the 1.3 million more and doing that, that's just where we are. That's just how it is. I think that taking that out of the perpetual care fund is probably the best funding mechanism that we've got. I hear with sympathy a lot of what Councilman Cathy is talking about, you know, that we, the idea was that we wanted to build up that perpetual care fund and then live off of the interest. I think it's like Councilman Hopkins said, you know, that was when you could get 10% interest. And, you know, some of us are old enough that can remember that you could use to get 20% interest, something. Those days aren't coming back in the near future. And I think we might have to stop and rethink that perpetual care fund somewhat, because the idea was that we would have all of these assets that have been paid 4% by 1% money over the years, and they're going to hit their lifespan. And we're either going to have to just trash them and shut them down, or pay for them in some way. And maybe invading the corpus of that is where we're stuck with. Because I, you know, frankly, I have a problem sitting here saying, well, we're going to build up this $30 million thing, and we're going to get 1% interest on it. And then we're going to try and live off of that 1% interest when we have this big account sitting there, so we could, something about that just seems upside down to me. Now, if you're getting 5% or 10%, where that generates an appreciable amount of money every year, then that makes some sense. But when it's just sitting there, getting 1/2% or 1% or whatever, I don't know. I'm sure we're getting something more than that out of that, I would hope. But I think that invading that corpus is probably the way to do this.
Just really quickly, I think for me, this decision isn't a thing of I think or I feel. This is like a prove it to me. And so if it would be appropriate, when we come to the decision of funding this, could we have the accounting team maybe prepare some forecasting and projections as far as why they would think that it would be appropriate to borrow from that corpus and not return it, as far as like based on their projections and forecasting? Or, you know, obviously, maybe their projections and forecasting prove to us that, hey, maybe we do need to pay back that corpus over a five, six, eight-year period, whatever it may be? Because I guess to me, that's just a numbers, that's something we could prove. That's not something that should be made on, oh, my gut tells me that this should be $30 million arbitrarily. Like, no, this is something that we can absolutely prove with numbers.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I had hoped that we could have the policy discussion that sets in place and memorializes the management of that fund as well as a number of others. The opportunity fund's another example and so on. We very easily can put together kind of a life cycle of that fund and what it looks like. You know, when you talk about what it is that we currently experience, we're lucky to get a 0.5 rate of return on interest income for that fund, which means that that can be anywhere from $400,000 to $500,000 a year potentially, if I remember correctly. And so whether or not that $1 million erodes that interest income to the extent that all of a sudden, you know, we can't do a number of things, I think is where you're getting at. And we very easily can demonstrate what we think that'll do to our income, assuming that we get some modicum of interest that we can depend on.
Is part of that in the Davidson Fund?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would say that the Davidson investment strategies are what we use primarily, but there's a number of things that we keep money in.
Mr. Mayor, I think there is another way to look at this. I mean, the money isn't disappearing, it's being put into a hard asset. And you can also say that by doing this now, we are in effect getting a yearly return, because the cost of building that asset is going to go up over time, and we're saving those increases by doing it now. So the money isn't disappearing, it's just going from a liquid asset into a fixed asset that we own.
Not to mention what we're saving on repairs and free-on and everything else.
I don't like it either, but I just don't think we have another choice.
I have, and again, I have no problem with using that money. But I have watched it in other organizations, that they have this big fund, and they keep doing exactly what we're talking about doing, and they don't figure out a repayment back to that fund. And five years from now, there is no more perpetual care fund. And I use five years, it may be 15, but they wind up chewing up that asset, and then they're in this situation... And then they're in this situation and have no asset. That's why I'm so interested in being able to return our money.
The original goal when it was established, as I understand it, predates me, was to build it up to fifty million dollars. And during my term, we were able to contribute to it with, when times were good. And I think that's the game you play, is is when you have the opportunity, you build it up. But now we're in a situation where we need some other money.
Well, and if this is an option to take care of these type of problems, I agree with trying to get the money back in or looking for a way to get the money back in. Because this project is is the eighties, from the eighties. And there's, I know that we've got several other projects around the city that are that are the same era. So if we're starting to have problems with these things now, what other problems are going to pop up? And we're going to have to infuse money back into it. So I would, I would agree that we need to find a way of putting the money back in case this happens for another facility or something else, if you can say.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I'd like to propose that we do go with option one.
Everybody gave us option one?
And use the perpetual care fund, if people are prepared to go that far.
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Uh, before we move on, I forgot to tell you guys, Lefty's barbecue brought some food in tonight for everybody. So if you want, you can make your way over and grab some as we move on. And thanks to them for doing it. Okay, we'll move on to cup class plan preliminary meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we we have talked about this project, and you have given us authority to move forward. And and um, we we talked about the consultants and so forth and entered into that agreement with Graves Consulting. We are now at the point where we want to uh, to kick this project off, as it were, uh, with respect to um, a a methodology discussion with you this evening. Uh, as well as taking the opportunity to to answer questions as to how the timeline is going to work with respect to this study, the steps that we're going to take along the way. Um, a big part of the discussion that we'd like to have with you tonight is with respect to what you envision um, uh, consistent with what we're suggesting for market and what that what that looks like. Um, our our consultant comes to us highly recommended and has a lot of uh, great ideas and industry standards that um, they plan to use as it relates to gathering this very important data uh, so that we can evaluate our wages and our and our and our ranges. And uh, as well as uh, important issues relating to internal equity and potential for positions uh, in between that that wage band that we've talked about and how that five-step process terminates a lot of people's uh, salary progression and and all those kinds of things. We've got a lot of important things we're trying to answer with respect to this study. And so the the conversation tonight, in my opinion, is uh, is a real important opportunity for council to get to ask questions, try to understand the direction we're moving in, and and make sure that if if you have input, that uh, that our consultants get to hear that tonight. And so um, with that, if I could defer to uh, to our consultant, uh, who can get us off and running, that would be very helpful.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to take some time out of your work session this evening. It's probably going to be best on us down over here. Oh, great, why does I can use this?
Don't block the barbecue, though.
Well, I was just going to say, I really don't like being between you guys and food. So I am happy to sit for a few minutes if you'd like to fix a plate of food. Comp is dry at best, and so I'd hate to be standing between you and food. And I'm ha- I have nothing but time this evening, so I'm happy to wait while you guys fix some food. Would you like to do that?
We have an executive session, right?
Week before.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure. So I appreciate the time to be here, and I I I have a lot of passion for this type of work. And and I have appreciated so far my chance to work with the city. One of the things I realized at the very beginning was the way this project was scoped. It was much broader and included a really broad look at everything, which is not the norm with all of the municipal projects I do. I think a lot of cities are interested in just tell me what to do to make the inflation factor for my market race and leave the rest of it alone, right? And what was nice about this was that it was a much more comprehensive view. So what I'm going to share with you tonight is just an overview of the intent, the scope of the project. I'm going to talk about my, the process and methodology that I and my team go through when we do these. And I'm also, for a couple of the items, going to go into a little bit more detail because there are pieces of it that we have addressed. There's a lot more of it that is still yet to come through the next few months of the project. So when I come back to do your final recommendations, we'll have a whole nother robust conversation. But this should give you an idea of what we've done and what to expect. And then we can make sure that it's really, um, what we'll be able to deliver will meet the intent and what you had in mind at the beginning. So I know the right button to click, which I do obviously. They're tricked if I'm not aware. Hey, what's your handle? Okay, thank you. I sometimes I'm not going to do this, it's not that. I talk with my hands and it's, that gets lost in it. So we'll go through intent and scope first, and some of these items I'm going to get into in a little more detail. So I won't spend a ton of time, but the intent of the project, as I'm sure is probably not lost on you, is to really make sure that you're recruiting and you're retaining top talent, right? And to make sure that what all of your employees at the city are paid competitively to market. And a really big intention that I think is great because it's a focus of mine, is that you have a system that is objective and that is transparent, right? I think when it comes to pay, you're never going to make a hundred percent of the people happy a hundred percent of the time. But the more your system can be objective versus objective, and the more transparent you can be with how you got to where you are and why people are paid what they're paid, it vastly increases the odds, right, that people are going to be comfortable with it. So that is a goal. The scope of the project is for Graves Consulting to provide recommendations to the city in several areas. So regarding the actual pay structure, the way your pay is, um, the bands and the ranges and the classifications, what that structure should look like, to do a benefit comparison, so you're looking at more of a total compensation view. It's not just cash compensation, not just base pay. That benefit piece, we'll talk a little bit about what goes into that. And to ensure that that data is coming from a statistically valid defined market area. And I think that's one of the areas that has, is challenging particularly for Casper, right? You are a little bit remote and a bit of an island here in the middle of Wyoming. And so many of the other municipalities that I work with have similar organizations that are within a fairly close proximity. That makes sense, it's obvious who your defined market is. I think that's a little more challenging here, and so we'll go a little deeper into that topic. Um, and then at the end, it will be to make a variety of recommendations on all of these things, um, the way that we see that being most appropriate for the city, right? So it's not going to be a, here's exactly what's right and anything else is wrong. It's going to be recommendations in several areas, and some of those may have two or three different options. Because this is not one of those things where there's one right way to do it, right? So I'm going to go a little bit deeper, if you'll move on to the next one, into specifically, um, what does competitive pay mean? So as we came for our initial kickoff of this project in December and met with the leadership team, we had a lot of discussion about the city's intent to be competitive with pay, right? So really being able to define what that means, saying it is great, but when you have an employee who says, what does that really mean? And how do I know? How can you show me that your structure says it's competitive? I wanted to talk a little bit, and this may get into a little bit more kind of comp geek detail than you're interested in, but I think it's illustrative to be able to understand how it can be important to be able to be transparent in this. So to ensure that the structure is competitive, what we will recommend, the steps that we're going to go through is we're going to gather actual wages being paid to incumbents, meaning employees and other organizations that are doing similar work, right? Or any organizations within your defined market area. We'll talk a little bit more about your defined market area. And I say that because the difference is sometimes what organizations look at is your pay range compared to other people's pay ranges. And while that might be interesting, that really does not have that close of a tie to what your employees are making, right? Particularly in municipalities where you find large percentages of people towards the top of the range, right? It's what they're making that matters, so that's what we pull. Once we have that data, we would place each position into a pay grade or a band, as you call it. And the goal would be to have that market average rate be as close to the midpoint as possible as that range, right? So when you build them that way, what that allows, you then have a width. You determine how wide you want your ranges to be, how far around that midpoint you're going to spread, right? You want them wide enough to where when you have brand-new inexperienced people coming in, they are likely to be below that market average. And then over time, they're going to be at the midpoint, and they should be able to, with tenure, and you have really a lot of long-tenured people, be able to be well above that market average still within their pay range, right? That's how you retain that talent that you have. Based on the tenure that I see within the city, it is very likely that when we build that, the vast majority of your employees will be at or above the seventy-fifth percentile. I only mention that because I know that that has been a kind of a stated goal in a way of talking about pay within the city and to employees for many years, right? This idea of being at the seventy-fifth percentile. So as we dug into that a little deeper, I wanted to be able to kind of demonstrate how this structure would allow you to be able to show that as opposed to just saying it, right, and having people sometimes guess what it means. Okay, that covers, so now I'm going to go into a little bit of an illustration on the next couple of slides. What you'll see here, so it's a bit of an eye chart, but but this is just a snapshot. One of the primary data sources that we're going to use is from an organization called Employers Council that you're probably familiar with. Has some Wyoming data, has a lot of Colorado data. There is data that we'll have to geographically adjust for your location. This is not meant to relate to a job that you have. I grabbed just a job to demonstrate what the data looks like when I did it. And what I want you to see is that lots of different organizations, what you get on the jobs is you get average pay of what the incumbents are actually making, weighted averages. You see a little bit about the min and the max of the range, right? You see what they actually call the job at their location, right? And you get a description to be able to match it with. What I've circled down here, this is the fiftieth percentile, so of everybody that reported wages for that job, this is the average fiftieth percentile, that's the seventy-fifth. Okay, so if you're looking at those numbers, assuming this were one of your jobs, which it's not meant to be, and assuming that was your market, which your market is a little bit different. This next slide will show you how that relates to a pay range, right? So if we were to look at your pay structure and say, okay, we have a pay range that has a midpoint of seventy thousand five hundred. When I'm looking at that civil engineer job, I would say, well, my market average, my fiftieth percentile is coming in just over seventy thousand five hundred. So this is the right range for that job, right? Thirty-five percent, maybe that's the right width for your ranges, I can't say yet, we haven't gotten to that point. It's common for them to be thirty-five, maybe forty percent wide. Yours are narrower than that right now. Um, if we do decide to go with thirty-fifth, this is what it would look like. That seventy-seven three oh one number that we saw, that was the seventy-fifth percentile, that is well within this range. So a person in this pay range would be able to be paid to add or not insignificantly above that and still be within range, right? To me, that is a way to ensure competitiveness. And what the note I put on here, where you decide to slot your jobs, um, they're not all going to come out this perfect, right? I'm not going to say the market average for every job, I'm going to happen to have a pay range that sits right on that market average. They're going to be somewhere in that vicinity. If on, in general, we choose to place them in ranges where the market average sits a little bit below the midpoint, that's going to position you even more competitively, right? So we have an ability to be able to choose based on affordability, right? Based on what's appropriate, how competitive you want to be, but this structure lends itself to that. And it's also something that is at least a little easier, right, than what you have in an ability to explain to employees what competitive means. So, does that resonate? Good, so comp one oh one, that part's done, we've all passed. Now, we're going to, I'm going to go back and cover a little bit more broadly some of the project deliverables, a little bit deeper dive into what we shared at the beginning, just so that we're clear. Because it will be much easier for all of us, when I come back in a couple of months for event final results, for it to be what you were expecting as opposed to having major gaps in it. So I appreciate having the time to to do this upfront. We're going to review and analyze your current wage structure and all of your classification systems, how you choose where the positions go, what grade they should all be placed in. We're going to define the city that the, the market that the city uses to compare itself to, which we have done and you've seen. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more depth, that's a really critical foundational part of it. We're going to create and deploy both a custom survey. So we've, I, all of those entities listed in your defined market, we are going to reach out to them individually. And we have about forty jobs right now identified, what will probably end up being fifty or so jobs identified, that we're going to specifically ask those organizations to provide data on. We're going to aggregate that data. In exchange for their participation, we're going to give them a copy of the survey results. Most municipalities are happy to participate when they can have somebody else bear the underlying cost of the survey, and all they have to do is participate to get the results. But we're also going to use um, data that comes from existing survey sources because we would never be able to collect enough statistically valid data on all of your city positions to build an entire structure on that, right? We're going to use that for the jobs that have some uniqueness to them, that have some struggles with the classification. We have some concerns about market, right, that's how we pick those jobs. We're also going to then take that employers' council data. We're going to aggregate that, we're going to use geographical adjustments where they're appropriate because we know that the cost of living in Casper is not identical to everything else that we've defined in your defined market. Some of them are less expensive, a few of them are a little bit more expensive, right? So we'll make those adjustments so that you'll know and that you can share with your employees. We haven't just left that part of it out, right? We're going to recommend a pay structure that meets the needs. It might be a revision of what you have, and it might be really a complete and total redesign. It might be options that include both, right, that you pick from. We're going to, along with that, we're going to provide recommendations for the implementation, um, for the ongoing maintenance of it. The goal is not to create perpetual work for me so that I build something so complex that I have to come in every year and update it for you, right? It is that you should walk away being able to maintain it on your own. Um, and then at the end, we'll create a final report. They'll go through all of the methodology, all of the findings and the recommendations. I'll let that with the executive team, represent it to council, and we'll share the results with all of your employees, which is a key component of this and one of the things we've talked quite a bit about upfront. I will be sharing in a couple of weeks with all of your employees a presentation somewhat similar to this that shares with all of your employees, here's the intent, here's what the city's undertaking, here's why, here's what we're going to go through, and here's what we expect to deliver. And then I'll come back at the end and say, here's what we found, right? Because that transparency is a key part of how you get value out of the project. So just to give you a little update on where we are, I consider these the foundational elements of the project. Meeting with the leadership team to review the scope and the process, talk about areas of concern. We had a great discussion a month or so ago, and a chance to hear from every department head, what are you struggling with? Where are your problem areas? Where do you see, where do you have concerns with recruiting and retention, right? We talked a lot about that definition of market, which we'll get into here here in a minute. Um, we will at some point facilitate a discussion about this idea of market data versus internal equity. And so without boring you, what I would say is it is unrealistic to assume that we will be able to go out and find the exact job matches in your market area for every single position that you have. I am hopeful that we will be able to match eighty percent plus, right? But there is always a certain number of jobs that are unique. There will be some jobs we won't have data on, and we will use what I would call internal equity to slot those into the existing scale, right? Some municipalities really want to use a lot of internal equity and kind of vary from market because of very specific reasons. And others say, market really needs to rule, and we're only going to use internal equity where we absolutely have to. There's not a right or a wrong, but it needs to be understood, right? So we'll talk about that. Um, we've gone through the positions and the entities included in the custom survey, so we'll have that ready to roll fairly soon. And then, meeting with employees, I'm doing that original, the upfront meeting in a couple of weeks, the last week of January. I think we have five, six, seven different sessions planned at different locations, some evening, to make sure we're kind of catching people where they work and on their shifts. People want to hear about it, but they don't really want to come in on the free time to do it. So that's the the foundation piece. Move on to the next one. So let's talk about definition of market, and I believe you have seen this. To me, this is a really critical element of the of the process. How do you define who is the market that we're going to compare ourselves to? And I think there's probably been a lot of discussion and debate about that over the years, right? Within the leadership team and probably with your employees as well. Through, in this discussion, the city is choosing to compare itself to other public and private employers in Wyoming and in what I would call the Northern Rocky Mountain region, right? So you'll see the list, you've seen the list, and we'll talk about that in a minute. That doesn't mean that you actually one-on-one compete with all of those organizations for the employees that you're bringing, right? We get that you're not out there in head-to-head competition on a regular basis with with Bozeman, right, on certain things. But what we need is a area that is large enough that we can get statistically valid data. Because each organization will only match some of your jobs, right? So we've got to have a wide enough path, and then we will, as I mentioned, geographically adjust those where it's appropriate. And then we will, as I mentioned, geographically adjust those where it's appropriate. Those geographic adjustment factors we get, factors we get from Economic Research Institute, so I'm not making them up. I'm using the most statistically valid stuff I can find, and I think that's something you absolutely can share with employees, that they appreciate this, again, some objectivity to that. So this is the list on the next slide that I think you've seen, that we came down with for the definition of market, the Wyoming municipalities. There are other Wyoming employers that are not municipalities, but do have some of your jobs that are good matches for, some you compete with, but some who will have similar positions to some of yours. And then outside municipalities who are located somewhat geographically, like within a geographic boundary, right, within bounds of reason. We also looked at population, right? We didn't pick tiny communities that had less than 10,000 people, we didn't pick major metropolitan areas, right, that have a half a million. So there is a factor of both geography and size that's in there. It is not an exact science, right, but this is what I think is large enough to give us that statistically valid sample, relatively easy to geographically adjust, and should have data on most of your jobs. So, questions specifically or thoughts on that?
I noticed you talked about averages, but have you ever thought about using median? I mean, that's the one that really counts, because that's what most people make.
Right. Thank you for that question. Yes, we have. We've looked at median, we've looked at mode, we've looked at averages, weighted averages, percentiles. When it comes to comp data, people love to slice and dice the information. The problem with that is that most entities aren't on, like you are a step system, where there is a defined amount of money for each step. So that median number, when you look at the data, many times they are very similar. The 50th percentile, the average and the median are very close to each other. It is-
That's a perfect bell curve.
It is, yeah. It is-
It would exist.
-unusual when you say different, and when I see a big difference between those, what I know is there's some anomaly in that data, right? And that's what makes me dig a little bit deeper. I generally am pulling average or 50th percentile, because most compensation models are built around percentiles, as opposed to medians. The numbers are very similar, but they're built around percentiles.
Long as it's in your mind, that's all that I was going to say.
When you do the study, will you be looking at these communities to give us some norms as far as advancement systems and how steps are used? Or will you just look at the wages that they're currently earning?
Okay, so, great question. We are asking them set questions, it is primarily wages. So I have a custom survey tool that I've built, that for each benchmark positions, gives them a brief description of the position. I'll also be sending the full job description. It asks for what you're currently paying your incumbents. It's asking if you have a range, what your range is on there. It will ask if you are matching that position, but it is not a complete 100% match, is your position slightly higher, slightly lower, where does it vary? And then it has a section that talks about other aspects of total compensation, like benefits. So specifically looking at the cost of health insurance, contributions to retirement plans, paid time off. What it doesn't get into and contemplate, mostly because we would probably not get any responses, would be the level of depth and complexity that you're talking about, right? How people progress through their ranges, what their philosophy is on that. If many people can't articulate it, and if they can, they won't take the time to do it in this survey. So it would be fabulous. I would love to have a tool like that, because I would use it all day long, right? I would have a hard time. What that, my recommendations of that are really going to be based a lot on my professional experience, and all of the municipalities I work with. The better I get to know Casper, and the areas that you're struggling with, it's easier for me to come forward and say, okay, for maintenance of this system, I think it's a better fit for you, right, to handle it like this. So it's in the scope of the project, but it won't necessarily be that level of detail we'll get from your market.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lori, does, when you use the term 50th percentile, is that your measure of saying what the market wage is for that particular position, whatever that position might be?
It is, as long as that is an aggregation of many responses to that, right? So I would not take one entity's 50th percentile and say that's what it should be, but when I aggregate what people are actually paying incumbents for those jobs, and I bring all of that together, and then what you see is that spread, it is the 50th percentile of that data, right, that we're taking. So Employers Council does it for us. When you go back, you can see in the custom survey, we'll be doing that calculation.
Okay, so with regard to that 50th percentile mark, is that what we would say market is for that position?
So yes, that would be my recommendation, right? So what I can tell you, and I think we've talked a little bit about this, 95 percent of the municipalities I work with build their ranges, with the midpoint being the 50th percentile of the market data. I have one entity that I, one municipality that I work with, that uses the 75th percentile as their midpoint, that's Aspen, Colorado, right? They have a certainly high cost of living, and my client there is a hospital who can afford it, frankly, right? So if you work for Aspen Valley Hospital, and you're a nurse, you can be pretty much assured that you're earning more than anybody else in the state of Colorado for that position. Now it's going to cost you that much to buy a home, right? But, so it's not that other people don't have larger costs of living, but they are not so dramatic, and even if they were, they couldn't afford it, right, to adjust their midpoint to be other than the 50th percentile. What I talked about a couple of slides back, where you would, when we're deciding what grade to place a job in, if you place them in the jobs where your market average is slightly below midpoint, that will increase your competitiveness, right? It won't necessarily be a 60th or a 65th percentile, it would just slightly increase your competitiveness, because people will hit the market before they even get to midpoint, and then they will have opportunity to continue to progress.
Can we throw out Jackson with their average? What is their average for the county? Quarter million dollars of income, the average income?
Cost of living is a key issue.
Thanks, Bob, I was fixing to ask the same question.
We will scrub data and throw out obvious outliers. So I can't say that everything that they report, I would throw out, but it is, we will see, you always, when you collect this data, see obvious anomalies and outliers, and there are ones that we simply throw out, right? Because there's no need to bring- Is there some on the high side? Some on the low side?
Too complex to try to weighted by cost of living for each community?
Well, so what's not, not really. So what I have, if you can picture this, right, is I have this master spreadsheet, that down one side has all of the positions that we're benchmarking, and then across the top has all of the entities that we're pulling data from. And for each one, I've loaded in the geographical adjustment factor, based on ERI for the difference in cost of living between them. So I am literally adjusting every single. Now, that is for the custom survey, right? So keep in mind, that will not, it will not be every job, but for the custom survey, we're making those adjustments. When we pull the data from Employers Council, we will use that same data to adjust for the ones that we're pulling out of there. And I think that's been a big question from your employees, and as I've had the chance over this day to meet with several employees and talk, it's one of the things they've talked about, right, is this idea of, yeah, that's great that you can tell me what somebody in Jackson makes, but that's not the same cost of living as here. So having that assurance that we've taken that into account.
Any other questions?
Okay, good. A few more things we're going to roll through on this, sorry, I keep on changing. So, we'll go back to the kind of bigger picture process and methodology, right? We've defined market, we've talked about the data sources, we've talked about how we ensure competitiveness. So job matching is what I would say is the other equally foundational important element to this process. Knowing your defined market, and then knowing that when I go out and say, well, what you're asking an equipment operator one to do is very similar to what everybody else is asking an equipment operator one to do, I really need to understand the nuance of your jobs, right? I can't just match them on title. I might get 50, 60 percent of them right, but I'd get some others really wrong. So we've spent a lot of time, and have a lot more to come, on really digging into the nuance. But the job matching process is probably from an hours basis. As I was quoting this project, that's where most of the hours are going, right? Because if you get that wrong, the rest of it doesn't matter, it's garbage in, garbage out. So we spend a lot of time here. I've worked with a lot of municipalities, I think I get the jobs, but I learn something every time, right, from each one, for something that's different. So we'll match as many of them as possible with the data, understanding that sometimes those matches are an easy one-to-one match, sometimes they're a blend of two jobs, right? Many times what you're asking people to do is wear two hats, and if they are really foundational elements of that job, we blend those together. I try to never blend more than two jobs, because at some point you just dilute, right, the value of any of them. And sometimes it is a benchmark with a scope up, because I can see this job and say, you know what, that's 70 percent a match, but there is a few things that you might ask of someone, or requirements or skill set certifications that you require that other people don't, and I would scope that up to account for it, right? So there is art and science when it comes to comp work. The idea that you can just go out and somewhere the internet can tell you exactly the right amount of money you should be paying, we're getting every job is not true, and would certainly put me out of business. But this is where a lot of that professional judgment comes in, and that ability to really say, we have matched the jobs accurately, and not just taken a broad brush, matching them on title, right? We will use private sector data, because you do have many jobs that exist in the private sector, so we're not going to limit it to just municipalities. You're going to compete with private sector for certain jobs, and so we're going to use that for certain jobs. So, the pay structure, again, we talked about this, once we've done all the job matching, this is kind of what comes next. We'll recommend revisions, or potentially a complete redesign of your structure, based on what we think is applicable from the data that we're getting. We will then recommend the placement within that structure for every position, right? Here's the grade and the band that we feel like it fits in, based on the market data. So we're not just going to give you the structure and say, great, figure out where they all go, right? We go to that extent. Then we move into the total compensation review piece of it. So this is where we've agreed to look at, really the major elements of your total comp package, that being the health benefits, the retirement benefits, your paid time off, and then incentive pay plans as well. So what I would call ancillary pay practices, right? There are several things that impact somebody's pay beyond just base pay, and for some jobs, that's a pretty big element of pay. So to leave that out would certainly be missing part of the picture, right? Where that data is available, we will do that, and come back with recommendations to say, here's where it looks light, here's where it looks generous, right? Here's some potential recommendations. Then we will, move on to the next one. We will take it a step further, once we've recommended where it fits, and we'll say, okay, what is the financial impact of this going to be, right? We have the census data, and are able to say, okay, here's what we're recommending, here's where everybody is right now, here's the financial impact. And from that, we'll also look at where do you have paid compression? We know that that's something that is an issue at Casper, it is an issue in every municipality that we work with, it's really just a matter of how much, right? Compression meaning where you have had to bring people in, making almost as much or as much as people in that same role, who've been doing it for many more years, right? Part of that is the changing labor market, and how tight it's been for several years. Part of that is the width of your ranges, they're fairly narrow, right? You move up five steps, and then you're kind of there. So there's pay compression we need to deal with. We'll also provide our recommendations for how you maintain this going forward, right? As I mentioned, it's not our goal to come in and do it every year. We'll end up with a final report, present everything, we'll vet it, we'll come to council and go through it, and we'll share it with employees. This is, I covered this point earlier, but I think it's important to understand, obviously we are not coming in and saying, this is what you have to do, and now you're stuck figuring out how to fund it, right? We give the recommendations, we give the pros and cons, it's up to the city to implement, right, and to choose how that's done. And what we commonly see, and what I think is a likely outcome, is that it may have a phased-in approach, right? Because there may be a not insignificant price tag, and obviously, as I heard, you have a few other things competing for the dollars that you have available. So we would make recommendations for what that phased-in approach would look like, because that's common and reasonable, right? And certainly something that's fair to share with your employees as well. This is what it said, here's what we're trying to do, there's a lot that's going to take us to get there, right? Generally, people know you're working on it, they're going to hang with you. That's what I have. Does that feel aligned to your expectations?
I appreciate the fact that you're meeting with employees. So you're giving them an opportunity to make a case that their duties may be more expansive than what's in their job description.
Right. So we've done that in a couple of ways. We distributed what's called a position description questionnaire to probably, I don't know, 100-ish, 70, 80, 100 people, to give us a lot of detail. But then today, that's what I've spent the day doing, meeting with employees in groups to be able to say, what do I not understand? What's the uniqueness, right? What might be lost if I were just reading this that I might not get? Really, really important. I want to give them more time. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your timeline?
Oh, great question. So the intent is to be complete in time to present at the meeting in the middle of April, I believe, I want to say the 14th. In an effort to ensure that we can get this in for budget, right, to be able to, for your crew budget. It's a little bit tight, we were a little bit later getting started than we anticipated, so it'll be, we'll be sliding it in under the wire. And it's possible that we will have the recommendations, and maybe some of the final presentations to employees and things like that might not have had time, but I am really focused on hitting that deadline, because I know how important it is for budget impact.
I don't think so.
Okay, we will then move on to dog parks.
You betcha. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is really a follow-up discussion for some of the homework that you asked us to do. First, as it relates to the east side dog park that we've spent some time talking about here, as well as with regard to what your direction is, as it pertains to potentially other dog parks throughout the community, maybe in conjunction with existing parks, et cetera. So we want to go over the menu of the investments that we propose to make on the east side, and then gain further direction as it relates to what you would like to see in potential facilities elsewhere. And that really is our mission tonight. If I could turn the time over to Tim to kind of get us through those elements of feedback, and we'll take the direction however you want to deliver.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to kind of go through this a little bit quick, and then you can just throw whatever questions you have at me. This might be a little hard read, but one of the things that we talked about with the oncology property or that park behind there, if you recall, I kind of threw out all the options last time, and it was like a million dollars that we could expend on this piece of property, if you so choose, and you didn't. So you scaled it down greatly for us, and we kind of just took with those bare minimum elements, if you will, that you all wanted to see. So what you have here is, if you recall, last time we had the dog park kind of located up here, but one of the things that we got from council was, is you want to see the water kind of included within the habitat for the pets and stuff. And so what you see here is this natural pond that's there. You see three water features, these are critical, not really for aesthetic reasons, but more to turn over the water to prevent algae and bacteria and stuff from, you know, pet stagnation there, making the pets sick. What you see here with delineated by the blue line is basically with the fenced-in area, what you're looking at right here in this particular example, is about an acre of a dog park area, that extends out into the water. And the way we kind of envision this would be, is as it would be, they say, a six-foot fence, but part of that fence would be submerged, and then the rest of the fence would be up above, meaning if Fido can't swim around the fence, and then get back out here and go, you know, possibly create havoc over here to the neighbors. I have another rendition of this as well, but basically, what you'll see is the bare minimum here is just for the water features, the fencing that encapsulates the park, some electrical service to run the water features, and that's pretty much it, for kind of just a bare minimum example. And then I have, within the packet, there's some spreadsheets, and I can pull them up here as well, to kind of break out what those individual costs are, and we can look at that, if you so choose. I'll also throw up kind of just another example that we had of this particular park, and then I guess I'll kind of just leave it to, you know, to kind of ask questions, or if you have some further direction for us to go off of. This would be just kind of another example, just moving that fenced-in area further to the north, still encapsulating the water, this is about an acre, 1.25 acres about. And once again, kind of the same principle, you'd have the water here available for the pets to get into. But once again, just bare minimums, fencing, water features, electrical service to run the water features. One of the things that I don't have in the packet, that I will mention, is I think, having walked this property a few times myself- a few times myself, the, it's kind of that usual soil that we get in Casper with the bentonite and stuff. It gets slick and it sticks to your shoes and stuff. And I would forecast that people might want a pathway, you know, to kind of get from, you know, basically from where they park, on-street parking into the park and then maybe a little bit of a walkway inside there. We recommend doing an asphalt just because there's no big vegetation that would require concrete, but probably look an additional $20,000 to do a pathway that would at least get you into the park and be able to walk around a little bit with your pet. Just because I would anticipate we'd probably get complaints of people saying, hey, it's unusable if there's been rain for the past, you know, 24, 40 hours, something like that. So anyways, that's what I kind of got for the east side dog park in a nutshell. And I thought you kind of had a long night already, so cut it to questions, but yeah.
Well, I have a question. The first slide that you showed, I actually really liked that idea right there where the dog park is because where it says 8.72 acres that if you wanted to look at or if we wanted to look at eventually making that into a parking spot, spotting the dog, if we look at doing a path in the future all the way around it, it just, I think that other one would be really nice right there. So I like the first one that you mentioned.
Mr. Mayor, if we've been counseled, but I might point out also, the reason we selected these two particular sources is because they're kind of loving and so the amount of grading it for it works kind of at a minimum. So both to us are kind of equal in that respect and cut the cost.
Tim, back on the other layout that you have, the, I think it's 108,500 is what the price tag is on that. That, so there's a hundred thousand that was donated to do this, correct?
Correct.
Is there a way of potentially cutting that fence line down by $8,500? I mean, if we could just use the money that's been donated and not have to cut it into some funds somewhere else to make this happen, is that a possibility of cutting that fence back enough to have that savings?
Mr. Mayor, council, I think that we, whatever your direction is, we'll make it happen with regard to that. So I think that's totally doable.
I guess to me too, obviously, I'm not going to sit here and advocate and spend any more pennies. I may absolutely have to, but I would say, I mean, we have to remember too that the money was given to us if you do something with this site. So even if we end up saying adding the 20,000 for the asphalt pathway, which, you know, obviously would probably be expected to some degree because of soil and dirt and mud and weather. I mean, we're spending 20, but we're also receiving 100 that is covering the majority of this project. So I absolutely agree that, you know, it'd be great to keep it under the 100, but I also, I do think the pathway is kind of necessary. I mean, even if it's just to get to the fenced-in area, maybe not, you know, within the fenced-in area, but I mean, we all live here and we all know the millions of seasons that we seem to have within a calendar year and, I don't know. I guess to me that seems like a base minimum to get to where you park, to the park, to the park itself.
And I guess with that being said, is there, so it looks like there's $58,000 that's going into that fenced-in area. Is there, if we took 20,000, 28,000 out of that, it's just because I don't want to spend the 8,000. But if we take roughly almost half of that away, that's still going to leave you roughly a half acre of fence, correct? And would that be enough area, a half acre being enough for a dog park?
Mr. Mayor, great question. You know, obviously, I've kind of become a kind of expert on dog parks from that. I can do a lot of reading on dog parks nowadays, which I can't believe I'm saying that. Actually, what they say for best practices is you never want to put anything smaller than a half acre when it comes to small dogs. I would probably say, you know, just anecdotally, I think I see a lot of, I see a lot of large dogs within our city, you know, and just what I see in the back of a pickup truck, you know, is the retrievers and the labs and stuff like that. Then they say you really shouldn't go any smaller than an acre, you know, and, I don't know. Because if it's just you and that pet, it's probably adequate. But you probably got to forecast that you might have four, five, maybe more pets and others, you know, kind of occupying that space. So just best practices. I mean, we could still do whatever you want, but best practice is kind of what is in line with that.
Councilman Hubert.
Tim, where you have that fence going out into the water, how far out does that go in the water? Twenty feet, 10 feet, 100 feet, you know?
Mr. Mayor, council, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I, just being out on the site, I would say that you're probably looking more along the 20, 25-foot threshold, which is totally adjustable as well. I mean, this is just kind of a conceptual idea.
Councilman Bates.
The fountains that's there, is it 30,000 for one? Or are you calculating 30,000 for the three of them that you have up there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because actually it's a misprint in your packet. It says there's two motors. It's actually for three motors, so it would be for all three is 30,000. It's approximately 10,000 per water feature. And the reason that we arrive at three is to churn that much water is what we calculate we would need as the three features. I mean, originally, we were hoping we could do two to save costs, but it wouldn't churn enough to get what we really are looking for as far as straddicking the bacteria and stuff.
Thoughts?
I like that. I do. I like everything about it. I know the 20,000 for the pathway, I understand that you don't want to spend that much on it, but I think it would be, as Vice Mayor mentioned, spend 100,000 or we got 100,000 to put into it. We're saving a lot if we had to go up and do this anyways. So I'm for it.
Tim, could you flash the other option up there? And the other option would cost how much?
120,500.
For this option?
For this, for the, that, I don't know. So one's 108, this one's 110.
A lot of that cost, Mr. Mayor and council, is just, you'll notice it's about a quarter acre more in property at the fence and there and stuff. So I think that's the majority that you see for the cost differential.
You're just over here playing with this. Basically, an acre is roughly what, 208 by 208 footage?
Forty-three, five, sixty square feet. There's a square feet for our calculation.
But I'm trying to figure out linear footage of fence. Oh, it's a fence and acre. So that came out to 800 and some, which if you divide that into the 58,000, you're looking at about $69 a linear foot. You divide that $69 a linear foot into the 20,000 that you were wanting to save, then you reduce that linear footage down to 258 some, or 500 and some. You divide that by four, you're looking at roughly 135 by 135. It's roughly the size of fencing if you wanted to take that out as opposed to 208. So you are significantly reducing the square footage, well, almost in half. 20 off of 58, so that's kind of where you're talking dollars and size-wise. So I guess if you really wanted to put it in there, you'd need to take the 20. You'd need to spend the extra $20,000 rather than try and eat it out of a motor or anything. I think you're down to pretty much the bare bones there, Mr. Cortez.
We tried our best.
Councilman Hubert?
We tried.
You had explained earlier that you picked those, these two areas, these two options because they're basically flat. Asthetically, do you have a preference between these?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I don't think so. I think that what I would just probably want council of this is, I think, Councilman Powell said a great term earlier and it was mission creed. I think you just find out within parks in general and you will probably get people that'll want the next step, you know, the next stage. And whether it's a pathway that I've already kind of talked about, whether it's curb and gutter, you know, which we require, you know, for a lot of other people. But you can see the curb and gutter here stops here. Get from that point to the end of our property is about 35,000. Off-street parking, whatever it is, I think that that's probably what I would probably say the bigger warning that I would probably throw out there. As far as the two options you see here, we're probably.
In terms of fitting into an overall plan for the whole rest of that area, do you have a preference as to have either of these?
Mr. Mayor, council, council, not really because we have identified areas that would probably be good, say, that next stage if families over here said, hey, it's great that the pet's got something. We want something for the kiddos. We think we have.
But either one of these options would, would fit in with those other things?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Kep.
Along those lines, based on what your million-dollar project was, is really the fence being the previous option, the lesser expensive, puts the dog park then and that fencing right next to where you had shown the, the play area and everything. And it leaves that area up there, which is now part of it is your parking, which is, I believe, was part of your original plan, wasn't it?
You're correct. The parking would have been right here, which could still be doable. Either, either option, yeah.
Councilman Bates.
The only reason I thought of the other one is, you know, I mean, I like that it's bigger because I have a very large dog, so I like to take it to the dogs. But you're right by what's the building right up above?
The oncology.
The oncology. The other one brings it down further away, the dark, dogs barking, human traffic, all that going on. You're just down a little bit further and that's why I recommended it was trying to keep those guys in mind up there.
Councilman Bates.
The only other thing too is I actually, I was going to at first say, well, this one would cost us less to pay if we were just going to go straight from the road to this one. But that brings up a good point. We kind of already have this, you know, footpath that's been, you know, created just from whatever type of traffic that's already around this. Yeah, and so for some reason, we were to end up, you know, incorporating that into like a pathway at some point down the road. The other option actually allows us to still maintain kind of that, you know, circumference pathway that would basically go around everything, whether there's a playground or a seating area, whatever we may add in the future, where this one kind of eliminates that pathway that would go all the way around the water feature.
That's a good point.
Mr. Powell.
First off, Tim, I think you did exactly what we asked you to do.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, in terms of the 20,000, I guess I'd like to remind people, we started out at a million. And so he's reduced it by, it's 10 times smaller than it was.
If only I could have done that with the sheet of mine.
And once you put the fence in, you're not going to redo that. And people are going to have to live with that for, you know, who knows how long. And I think, I think this kind of creates the bones, the bare, the, the structure of the park. And we'll leave it to future council to decide if they want to add things to it out of that million-dollar project, but I, I, I just, I think 20,000 is a relatively small price to pay to put, to get a footprint. And let's not restrict ourselves unnecessarily.
Do you have some questions?
Could be 28,000.
Yes, 500.
With the path.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, where would that 28,500 come from if we were to thumbs up that?
Council salaries.
28.
But Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm not totally sure at this point in time. I would be inclined to want to look at 1% dollars. I would, I would ask Tim to evaluate projects that he's working on to see if we had any residual balances there. I would probably go to Andrew with the same question, which Andrew probably has a better chance of having some residual balances, although he's not here to say, oh, no, that's not true, kind of thing. But between those two, I would probably generate those dollars versus going to like perpetual care or, or some other, you know, fund to make it happen.
I realize nothing official can be done here, but I guess I would like to see, as you said, look for the funds and go back to that other, not this plan, but the first plan. I would like to go with that plan. And I would like the mayor, if possible, to ask for a thumbs up on that plan, adding the extra 20,000 for the pathway.
Yes.
Well, I want to ask for that, but I also want to ask to go back to the other plan. And I'd like to know what it's going to cost to put that pathway in just to that fenced area. And I know we say about 20,000, but it could run one way or another. I, I would like to keep it at that, again, at that 100 if we possibly could because things will be added on as time comes. Somebody's going to, you know, you want to add a path to get into the dog park now and then somebody is going to want to add a path to go all the way around. And so they will be coming back to us, but, so I guess my recommendation would have been to just expend the 100 for what we can and not do the path. But if you want to, if you want to put the path up there now, I don't have a problem with that.
But that's, that's the plan, the fencing plan, isn't it?
Yeah, yep. So do we want to put it on the table then to do this plan?
And I can do without the path to a point because right now people are using the existing path that are already using the existing path around there, which is already shown on the aerial photograph. And we don't need it.
Do what? The key is the fence.
Yeah. Absolutely. The fence and the sprinklers still. If you're willing, if you're willing to go for the eight, I'll forego the other 20.
Why is it says eight? It said cap it at 100, but, but yeah, that's a, Councilman Bates.
As far as the path, what are you looking at, where we're at? I mean, would you be looking at supports for the path?
Path could come in a couple of different ways. We could tie it to the, where the sidewalk ends or we could just come off the middle. And then the thought would be is the path would actually be a loop and we'd probably size the loop in such a manner that it accommodates the 20,000. But a loop would exist inside the loop with just the path that it gets you from that road.
Which is, which is how the, not Morant, but the McKenzie Park is laid out, right?
Like, yeah.
Inside the corner.
Probably a big difference to point out, councilman, is we're advocating for an asphalt one in this particular case, which is much less expansive. The reason that we have concrete in Lake McKenzie, if you recall, is they have a lot of large trees that would uproot and tear up the asphalt, so that's why we have concrete in areas.
Or the recyclable tires that it says.
We're looking into it.
Okay, Councilman.
We, we got a couple of options here. About, I think, three years ago, we put a couple of little parking spots out on King Drive because people were just driving all over out there. So, okay, we'll put, we'll put down some road base, compact it. And while it's not plowable for snow, it's, it's worked pretty good for, and you drive by it a lot. There's people that park there quite a bit and have their lunch and so forth. So I'm not sure we have to have a paved lot. We can road a mill or just some compacted road base. It's a lot cheaper than putting down asphalt.
Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know you've talked about this before, so forgive me for asking this again. But I, I just want to be sure that the entire pathway is within the limits of the ownership of the, of the city's property. I'm getting confused by the multiple lines in there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is just a two-track road that has naturally evolved and the property came that way to us. When I say the pathway for what we're talking about, I'm talking about a pathway from here just down to here and then a pathway within the fenced-in area. This to me is really, I don't want to say it's nothing, it's just a, it's a game trail for lack of a better term. So to me, it's not a pathway. It's not anything we're proposing as a pathway because you are in fact correct. If you see right here, our ownership is this red line. It actually extends out. It actually extends out, comes out of our property, you know, to the adjacent property owners. So in previous iterations, what we had was, if we were gonna put in a pathway, we would have to cut across and come back onto our property, then tie back in the, kind of that point, if that answers your question.
So so that 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 bold line on the outside of the, for example, south of that red line, is not our property ownership line?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
I was thinking that was our property line.
I wish it were.
Yeah.
This is an existing fence line that goes onto the McMurray, one of the McMurray arraignments.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But they still own this property right here.
Well, and that path that goes around there looks to me like people have been riding their four-wheelers around there, and that's what's worn up there.
Does it, you said you walked it. Does it look as like it's a four-wheeler more, a gene path as usual?
I would say it's more vehicular traffic.
Oh.
Critters don't walk sideways in that way.
But but the aerial.
How old is this picture?
It's more accentuated, the aerial view is than when you get on the ground. It's really hard to see it, you know, if you're on the ground. So, I mean, actually, it's more pronounced in this photo than what you see when you walk out there.
The only thing I was gonna say is I think Bob has nailed it. Like, I definitely don't have expectations. It doesn't have to be an asphalt. I was just saying something to keep people from like sinking down in the mud and like having to wear like knee-high muck boots to take their dog to this dog park on the off-chance. You know, when it becomes rainy times, like that's typically what happens. I mean, obviously, I wear dogs, like I take my dogs a lot, but I don't know that everyone else is going to expect that, especially somebody with a tiny dog that's, you know, just trying to get them out and run, where like people like me would be like, okay, we're gonna go practice like waterfowl hunting sessions and things like that in the water. So, no, I mean, if that were an option, then I think if that went to save money compared to doing it asphalt, that'd be great.
Yeah, it might.
So Councilman McCaffrey, what you had on the table is?
It it's just a thrown-out suggestion, it isn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
So can we get the price difference of what Councilman Hopkins is seeing in the pathway, the asphalt pathway is?
Mr. Mayor, I, Councilman, the answer is yes, we can, we can do that. I I just a point of clarification, Councilman Hopkins talked about a parking lot, parking places. And so really, to me, that's nowhere in this project currently, since that was a million-dollar project we talked about. So I would need some clarification there. And then I also would just kind of throw out there as a warning is that, you know, we've kind of set out standards for our pathways, meaning, for the most part, they're concrete. If they're around large vegetation where we we have to worry about rips and stuff. Then we can go back to asphalt. Nowhere do we really talk about compacted pathways, you know, that are just road base and kind of some variation thereof. So I just warn you that, you know, we kind of probably set an precedence that we really haven't done since I, at least, I've been here as the park director.
Well, I'd like to make the recommendation that we stick with this plan, but we take it up to expend the hundred thousand dollars that's been set aside for it, and then look into the cost of putting a path to that fenced-in area with whatever materials would be recommended by you. That would be what we use in the city itself. And then when we identify what that cost would be, then we can go back and look, whether we take it out to Andrew or wherever you decide. But where we have some cost savings somewhere, let's look at expending funds for that at that point in time. But I'd rather that we just stick to the hundred thousand right now and do what we can in that park and then go from there.
Good.
Anybody have thoughts on that?
I, as long as, I don't like the idea of making it smaller.
I'd rather go with the hundred and pointy.
Well, it's a hundred and eighty. Eight thousand dollars in that fence. I hate to have you do the math again, but I mean, how much would eight thousand dollars cut this down?
Mr. Mayor, if Councilman Kathy didn't wanna do the calculations real quick, I'd say we can get that to you and give you a square footage or how many line of feet we'd have to cut back to get within that. It, to me, it would be nearly as bad as what the previous calculations were, which would probably put us below the threshold of where we wanna be with acreage available for the pets.
The fence is seventy-five dollars. Let's give a thumbs up to this. We can fine-tune this.
Cut off a hundred and sixteen-foot of fence.
I would, I would warn you that this is right at an acre with this current kind of configuration. So you would, you kind of dip them below the best practices threshold, but it is totally your call. We'll do whatever you you like.
Okay.
I'd like to stick with the hundred and eight.
Me, too.
Okay, so everybody in favor of sticking with the hundred and eight-five? Thumbs up. All right. I guess I lost that.
You you take the square out of the northeast corner and you flatten out the southwest. You may take out that hundred-foot of fence.
Yeah, it could be.
Square it out, 'cause there's too much ground going up.
Tim, if I can ask you one more question. So if you're going twenty feet out to that pond with fence, is there more, I mean, do we know how deep that is? Is it, how how's, what kind of cost is going to securing that fence up? If if I saw that, right, is that fence going out that far? Or is it just gonna?
Well, Mr. Mayor, to be honest with you, we're not quite sure. We were planning on doing a lot of that work ourselves. Meaning, so to answer your question, the the cost probably isn't as bad as you think. We just don't know how far we're gonna be able to get out there and secure it. So if it becomes just like, oh, my gosh, this is way more than we thought we could do, it might be ten feet out. You know, if if we think that it's pretty shallow and we think we can get good work done thirty feet out, we're gonna get good work done thirty feet out, and we'll adjust the rest of the circumference to accommodate the budget.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I, if, all right, with you, I I just wanna make sure that we covered the second part of the kind of the homework that you all kind of gave me direction that we'll talk about, and that was pocket dog parks within existing parks, if you recall. And so two of the things that were thrown out there, and I have another example. One of the examples, I think, it was Councilman Huber said, hey, what about City Park, some little area for the small dogs in the community? So we've kind of done a rendition of what that would be here. And then I also have one for PB Park as well, and I can show you both real quick. But what we're talking about here is doing semi-permanent fencing. The reason me and my staff really like this idea is because if you remember, I talked to you about programming space and trying to find places where people aren't gonna come to you and say, hey, we had all this programming lined up, now you guys can take it away for the dogs. So the semi-permanent aspect would be panels of fence, basically, that we could put in areas, secure them with T-posts, and then kind of see how it works out. People could love it, not like it, and we can adjust it. Meaning, if it didn't go over well, we could pull it and reallocate that somewhere else. If people loved it, then we could come back at a later date, budget, do the normal budget process and say, hey, we're gonna put permanent, nice vinyl fencing in, and it's gonna be a permanent feature of this park. Move the irrigation accommodated and all that. So that's kind of why we've kind of landed on this after getting direction from you all last time. And basically, what it comes down to is it's about twenty-seven thousand dollar expenditure for every half acre we would want to do. So in this case, it's a much smaller area than a half acre, but that's what it kind of comes out to for you to put this semi-permanent fence in there. The good thing about this, doing something like this also, is is we're kind of worried about how the traffic might affect the turf. And by doing something like this, we could move the dog park if it were to get some wear and tear on it. A, would tell us it's being used, which is great, but B, we would be able to relocate it and then kind of heal up that area, if you will, and and then at some other point, we decide, hey, we want some kind of fake turf or some variation thereof to kind of, you know, fill in the blanks, I guess, and kind of make it exactly what the community's kind of driving for. And so then I take any questions, and I'll throw up the PB Park one right now. Basically, what I'm saying is it's very flexible, very scalable. We could do it in any park you you kind of really want, you know? If there's a need out there, we'd say, okay, we need X number of dollars to put in the panels, and we'll do it and see if it takes or not.
Those are gonna be cattle panels from the Mardox? Or Murdochs, I should say.
I'm not gonna say no, Councilman. Once again, very flexible. These are just like ideas that we threw out there. This this one, we kind of came up with, we wanna keep it away from the houses. Yeah, we know that there's a lot of programming that goes on here. We thought maybe this would be a good place to start. But like I said, if people complained about it, we'd just say, all right, where do you propose? We can meet them out on site. We can move it to where they propose, you know? Flexible proposal.
I like it. I I really like the idea of being able to rotate it, because we don't know if that's gonna kill all the grass, but we'll get a sense of that and then move it. I like that video.
Councilman.
I like it, too. I just, where would we find the funding for that? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pacheco, it it it, in fairness, it is not a a budgeted project.
Yeah.
And so I I would be doing a very similar exercise, where I would go to Tim and say, hey, Tim, tell me about your projects and what, you know, leftover you might have, or or Andrew. I would seek to fund it through one percent is basically my answer.
So could we come back and see if there's funding we could find before we, I mean, would really push forward with it?
We could give it a contingent thumbs up, provided if we can't find the money, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I guess the other thing, too, is though, I mean, we are literally months away from discussing next year's budget. So, I mean, I hate to push it off, but at the same time, you know, we're just moving forward with the east side one. So maybe we'll, I mean, we do need to probably take this in chunks. And so, you know, we, as we said, we were gonna add dog parks. We're adding a dog park on the east side. Maybe we, not table, but hold off on these issues until we're in a budget discussion and see if we have the room to cozy up and squeeze those into, what, twenty, twenty through twenty-twenty-one budget.
The only hesitation that I have about doing that is it'd be nice, if we're gonna do these things, to get them going so that they could be ready for next summer. We did that, you know, that, we'd lose next summer. So, but obviously, if we don't have the money somewhere, we can't do it. So that's why I suggested that we approve these contention on finding the money somewhere that doesn't hurt too much.
Councilman Bates.
Can we look at approving one of them? And as much as I like this PV, because I live there, the City Park, it's downtown. It's right there. See a lot of people walking their dogs around there, including Dallas Learne with his little dog. So if we could, Council would agree to lease the City Park one, and we can wait, see if, but see how that works, and then maybe budget time, look at here, and maybe another one or something like that.
I'd just like to see what monies are available.
Yeah.
See, but I just, I mean, I've said this before, it's a promise we made to people when we put the leash law in place. And I think we need to make that on time.
Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna be completely opposite of all of you guys, and I would, I think you put this on hold, and let's try and find a location that, because if I heard you write just now that Dog Park on the east side, we want a minimum of a half acre, and we wanna be at an acre. And these are at a thousand eight hundred and seventy-five feet, or square feet, so that is not very big. I mean, it just, it serves a purpose for people to say, there's a dog park, but you're gonna put a dog in there, it's gonna run around in circles. I mean, it makes no sense to me to put money into this when it's not even what's recommended for a minimum. So I would say we wait, see if we can find some money in the budget, and then let's find a location on the west side or downtown that has enough space to it that we can afford to do it and do it right by doing the minimum amount of land.
Yeah, I I tend to agree with you. What what we're creating in City Parks, we're creating a big dead yellow patch. That's what it's gonna be. If you have that fence there, unless you move the fence fifty yards every week, you're just gonna create a big yellow patch of smelly dog spots. And and so I'm not sure I want it downtown.
To me, this was, to me, this was an experiment, a relatively inexpensive experiment. You may be right, and then we'll know, but we won't know until we try it.
And I certainly recognize, Mr. Mayor, what you're saying about these places being small. But I think of my doggy, who's a pretty good-sized doggy, and she manages to build up a full head of steam running loose in my backyard, which is not terribly big. It's probably about the size of what these areas are. I think maybe you could probably guess better at it, but, so.
Councilman Bates.
I agree, as long as we do it, as long as we figure it out, because Councilman Bell said, you know, I was for the leash law, as long as we agree to do something for those that have dogs and put in other dog parks throughout the city that are grassy areas. And I will emphasize again, the grassy areas, because there's those that maintain their dogs, spend hundreds of dollars to make them look nice, but wanna take them out, they can no longer keep them off the leash. They have to have them on leash, but they like to throw the ball, you know, thirty, forty feet and have their dog chasing them back. So we have pushed this and pushed this and pushed this and pushed it, especially the grassy areas. I don't wanna see us push it all the way to next year, next council, or as long as we have a commitment that, yes, at budget, we will consider, you know, find a way to do it. I'm I'm game for pushing it back, but we've been pushing it back a lot.
Vice Mayor.
I guess to me, I mean, we can sit here and talk about this so blue in the face, but I'd say that we ask staff to bring us back possible current funding options, and if there aren't possible current funding options, then unless you're finding somebody to pay for it, just wait till the next budget discussion regardless. Yeah, so I'd say we ask, or thumbs up to ask staff to bring us back funding options if they exist.
Councilman McCall.
I have one other question as well, is, first of all, I wasn't on council when you all passed that. I thought it was a crock to begin with, but by the same token, I would be very interested in knowing if we've seen any change in statistics since that's been initiated. Because I know in my area, people haven't changed their habits a bit. They're still walking down the street with no leashes on their dogs, and some of them are picking up the remnants, some of them aren't. And so, to a point, I feel like we're spending money on something that a few people will use, but by the same token, the large majority of them aren't gonna really care about that particular smaller dog park. That's my personal feeling.
Councilman Bates.
Well, the, the purpose of the leash was the attacks that people were going through and was to protect those that were being attacked. The dog parks was not just for the little dogs, but even my size of dog, stands so tall, was, if we create these parks, they won't take them to baseball fields, even though it says no dogs allowed. But they take them anyways, the soccer fields without leashes, that if we, we took away their right to do voice command, we give them a place that they can do voice command in a controlled area. That's how I bought, that's how I look at it and see it. And again, I agree with you. These little things, you're absolutely right. The, if the recommendation is half acre, those aren't even remotely close. I think we should wait until budget, but I think we need to make it a priority regarding the budget, is what I'm saying. And hopefully to alleviate those people that are choosing not to follow the law, and to give them a place that they go, hey, I can take my dog closer than.
Councilman McCall.
I would just say that I I think we should move forward with giving the staff the recommendation to go look and see if they can find funding, and then they can come back, and then we can, I mean, I'm sure you can come within the next couple of weeks to come back before we even start budget, obviously, before we start the budget planning. And you can come back and say, yeah, I can find us this extra blah, blah, blah. And you can come back and say, yeah, I can find us this extra blah, blah, blah. I think that'll probably be the most prudent course of action.
How's everybody feel about that? Thumbs up? Okay, we'll move on to agenda setting.
Councilman Bates.
Can I ask the council for possible three to put on agenda at some point in time? Really wanna set the agenda, then I can propose some ideas.
Repeat that again.
I have three agendas, or three things that I'd like to see put on the agenda, just.
Future agenda items.
Yeah, future agenda items. Do you want me to wait or do you want me to?
Yeah, well, we can do that here in a second. So just so everybody knows, and I might have said this, but maybe not. The way I've looked at the work session agendas, Councilman Powell, in the position of mayorhead, let us look forward and pick out our own topics that we were gonna discuss during the work sessions. But in doing that, last few months, it seems like we all go to the highlighted staff recommended items. And that's the agenda that gets set. So I have decided to go back to allowing staff to be the, they know what we need, what's time sensitive, what needs to be taken care of. So the agendas are now set back like they were before by staff. If there's something on there that we need to remove or add to that, we most certainly can. So that's pretty much what we'll be looking at, is we'll look at the agenda. If we have time that you wanna add something in there, we can. If there's something that is time sensitive that we need to get taken care of and we can remove an item the staff has on there and they have no issue with that, then we can do that also. So with that in mind, let's look at January twenty-eighth's agenda. And then if you have something that needs to be added to that agenda, then we most certainly can do that. And then if you have, if we can fit it in there. And then if it's not time sensitive, we'll put it on future agenda sessions so that it'll be a topic that staff can look at and fit in where they need to, or where they can. Is there anything you want to talk about on that agenda?
For the twenty-eighth, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the municipal judge has asked for a little time with you. We need to get some liquor license information to you in preparation for your public hearing that you have on an annual basis, which would generally take place in late February. You had asked for follow-up as it relates to both the downtown parking and the parking garage specifically, as well as the LGBTQ, what I call the sensitivity scoring as it relates to community environmental issues for that part of our community. We also wanted to take an opportunity to go over our progress with respect to the council goals and where we're at and what we've accomplished and potentially what we still need to work on. And so that's what we're hoping to cover with you on the twenty-eighth.
So it already looks like a pretty full schedule. Do you have, what items do you have that you're wanting to?
These can be, once, kind of, most of them can be future agenda items. One is a little more time sensitive. But the three that I have, and this is if council wants to entertain the idea. First one is, as I mentioned before, Sid Webb with Transportation, with the school district would like to come in and talk to us about as we create new neighborhoods or we do neighborhoods, that to create a cutouts for not only our city buses, but the school district buses, that they, that are on main roads to alleviate the buses going on into neighborhoods, getting stuck when snow comes. And all that, and he'd just like to come in and propose an idea of that and talk to council about it. So that one's more time sensitive because of construction season coming up. So that's if the council's willing to entertain that idea. Another one is, as I brought up in last regular session, feeding wildlife. I've received several emails and things about a neighbor in our area that is putting out grain food for deers and the deer are getting hit. Especially little ones are getting hit in that neighborhood. But also we've had issues up by the mountain with people feeding deers or wildlife, period. He gave me a, what Rollins does, I think it is, Rollins or Riverton, what their ordinance is. So I don't know if council wants to entertain that idea, just bring it up, because I told them I would. And then the other one is about the bike paths in town. I wanna believe that we all received, I had it and I lost his name. But anyways, we received an email that he rides his bike through town and he'd like to see a few more bike paths, which kind of goes along with the long range transportation plan. But making it more aware, making, I'm not sure exactly what he's wanting for us to do, but to make it safer for those who ride their bikes through town, ways that we can maybe make it safer.
I think he was asking if the three foot rule applied to Casper city limits and what efforts are being made to enforce that.
The what?
That you can't get, you can't drive within three feet of someone on a bicycle. That's a state, that's a state law, but I don't know if it's a part of our ordinance.
Keith Rollins, he did bike and pedestrian safety. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to future it, statistics and stuff like that to see where we're at with it. So those are my three future, if council wants to entertain.
My suggestion on each one of those is with Sid Webb and the bus cutouts. I don't know if we can do this or not, City Manager, with, we do have an CSD petition to vacate Eighth Street Davidson Center. So if that, the day that that comes up, maybe we could have Sid come in that same day and have a discussion about these bus cutouts at the same time. And those might go pretty good hand in hand. As far as the wildlife, that seems like it's an isolated issue with maybe one person. And I think that that, I mean, we can follow up with either Metro or Game and, well, I mean, Game and Fish. That seems like an issue that just needs to be taken care of with that.
There is nothing on the books regarding that. Nothing, nowhere.
Okay, well, I think we should reach out to Game and Fish, because there may be something on the books that we're not aware of. And so let them, let them deal with, with that issue by itself. And of course, it's based on the mountain, that has nothing to do with us anyway. So as far as the neighborhood issue within the city, I think that maybe we should get ahold of Game and Fish or Metro and pass that information on and see if they can just deal with that. And then as far as the bike pass, if that's a question as far as if that three foot rule applies here, if we could maybe get ahold of Mr. Rollins and explain to him what the law is. I don't know that that really needs to be an issue, that needs to be discussed unless in fact, it's something that's just not out there, that is a law, that we don't have enough information on. Then we could find a way to get the information out to the public. But I don't know that we necessarily have to have a work session item on it unless somebody sees differently.
I do think there is a pedestrian safety issue that needs to repeatedly be brought before the public. My wife walks every day and, I mean, it's dangerous out there. You got, when she rides her bike, I mean, their kid's playing chicken with her, I mean, it's. I think there is an educational component where we need to, and I bet most people don't know. If there is a three foot law on the books, I don't, I don't know. And maybe there should be some effort to say, this is against the law for you to do this stuff. Because people do get hurt. We've had some pretty horrible fatalities in this town.
Is that more based on information that we should be putting out? Or is that, do we need a work session item to discuss it?
Yeah, I guess I don't know the answer to this.
I'm not sure that we need a work session item about that. But I think that maybe if Mr. Henley or the chief could look into that, see, if that's an ordinance that we would need to pass separately, maybe we might wanna consider that at some point. If that's a feature in the, in chapter, in Title V, seven dash five, you know, the Uniform Act Regulating Highway Safety, that might already have been blanket adopted when the city adopted the Uniform Act Regulating Highway Safety. If, John, if you wouldn't mind in your spare time, kind of, looking into that a little bit and seeing. And then the follow-up question would be, even if the city hasn't adopted that, if the city cops could write those into the circuit court, if they, you know, if that is indeed a state statute.
Councilman Gett.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that'd be great.
So I don't think we need a work session item on that at this point.
Along those same lines, are bicycles supposed to follow, if they're on the street, the same rules that cars do? And what I'm talking about is Monday morning, I almost hit a bicyclist. It was a quarter to seven in the morning, which is still dark. And here came this bicyclist whizzing down the road in all black, no lights on it. And the second time I looked his direction, I saw his face. And that was it. And he came whizzing by me and as soon as he got past me, he whipped up onto the sidewalk and just kept right on going. So bicyclists need to be.
It's what's called an organ donor.
Yeah.
Donor cycle.
Only he would have hit the side of my, my car, but yet I would have been charged with failure to yield because I was at the stop sign and he was on the through street. But I know if that would have been a car, it would have been a different situation because he was then in violation of the law with not having lights and proper, all of that kind of stuff. So that's why I was asking about, do some of those things apply to bicycles as well? But the bicycle safety is a two-way street.
I don't think that the lighting applies to bikes, but as far as their movement, I think that they, they are expected to behave, comply with all the other aspects, stopping, running right away.
Like I said, he had, he had the through, the through lane. But if it would have been a car, he should have had his lights on and you would have seen him in the dark.
Lighting, though, I never, I don't recall seeing anything about lighting on a bike that way. And that's like, somebody said, that's a donor cycle.
But you hate to be the one that.
I know, yeah, yeah.
Councilman Powell, back to what you were saying as far as education for pedestrians and for bicycles. Where I was headed with that is we, the city of Casper does have an app that if we could just get that out to citizens to download the app, that's information that we can push out to them. And it wouldn't necessarily require us to sit here and have discussion about it. We could be constantly pushing that out there so that they understand that there, if there is or is not a three foot barrier between a bike and a car and whatnot.
I guess the follow-up to your follow-up is, if we don't all know, obviously, nobody knows that there's that rule. So if we don't have it, we should have it. And if we, if we do have it or put it in place, then we need to make sure people understand it. Because it is dangerous. And there are, there are people simply won't ride their bikes in this town.
Okay, are we good for the January twenty-eighth agenda? Gonna pass around real quick, the council committee assignments. I asked everybody just to kind of answer back, or to answer back, if they were happy on boards, if they were on, or if they wanted to make any changes. We also reached out to all the different committees that, that people are on and got some feedback from them as to any changes they needed to have made or if, if they just didn't have a presence that was there. The main ones that we need to really kind of look at was Casp, CPU Advisory Committee. We have, I think, Ken, are you on that?
I am.
Okay. Is that, does that one work for you or?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've just, it's been a hit and miss, but sometimes they have it. They'll go two months without it and then they'll have it. It's just, yeah.
Okay. And then also, it's like CATSI, Visit Casper's been taken care of. But as far as CATSI, we don't really, we don't have attendance on that either. Is anybody interested in picking up on CATSI board?
Do you know when they meet? Sorry, well, that's probably an unfair question.
Fourth Monday at two.
Fourth Monday at two o'clock at the senior center.
God, that is a weird time.
Mr. Mayor. It's got me down here as being on the Code Enforcement Appeals Committee, which I would, I agree about being on that. I've never, I don't know that I've ever been told when they were gonna have a meeting. The Air Service Advisory Committee, I'm not certain if I've ever been advised of times and places of their meetings either. So I don't know if those are just committees that are kind of inactive or if I haven't paid close enough attention to.
Air Service Advisory Committee is meet as needed.
Well, now other ones meet as needed too. But if they're not needed, but I don't mind being on those. I just wanna make sure that I haven't missed notices of meetings with those. I don't know if there's a way to check that, because I'd feel real bad if I was missing out and not going to something I'm supposed to go to.
The only ones that have been brought up, the CPU Advisory Committee, the CATSI meeting, and then Leisure Services Advisors, those are the three that would like to increase attendance.
Well, for instance, they were having a meeting today starting at four thirty. But I will plead guilty to having forgotten a couple of the Leisure Services meeting.
Those are on Thursdays.
Yeah, generally, yeah.
You said the Leisure Services?
Yeah, yeah. But I think Mike's on that though.
Something I noticed here is on page two, you got me on the Area Chamber of Commerce. And I think you and I had got put on there because Ken was not able to make that. But over on that page three, Ken is still listed as Chamber of Commerce.
No, you went right there. Right there under Ken's name.
No, I get you, I get you.
Yeah. Is that okay, Ken?
Yeah, no, I can't, I can't make that.
First page.
Okay, very good.
And I'm down as, as a second for you.
I've also been going to the CADA meetings. I don't know if I was ever assigned to do that or not. They were, they were saying they wanted a council member to go, so I went. So I'm, and I'm fine with making that an assignment.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think if, there's, there's two, obviously, segments of the, of the overall CADA function. There's a Joint Powers Board and then there's the, the actual CADA sort of private side board member spot. Typically, that's been a mayoral assignment on that private side. And so ostensibly, we could look at, you know, getting the current mayor into that seat there. And I don't, I don't know what the arrangement is with the Joint Powers Board. Basically two separate kinds of obligations.
And I think there's a CADA meeting next week, if I remember correctly, so. So whatever you want to do, Steve, either way.
See, that's the Joint Powers Board.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So you can stay.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the other?
The, uh, the actual CADA, uh, assignment, the sort of private side, is that on here?
No, that's not on here.
It's not on here, okay.
Well, I'm fine with you staying on that, uh, Joint Powers Board, so.
I think that's a good mix for the Joint Powers Board and somebody at CADA though, like, like you've been doing.
Yeah, but Carter's saying that's typical.
No, the other one is, the, the, right?
Yeah, because it's, what you're looking at here is the Joint Powers Board.
Right.
And what's not on here is the actual, the CADA board, which is what you've been attending to, right? Yeah.
So the Joint Powers Board you go to stand on, second Thursday at ten thirty in the morning, okay?
But we don't, we still have to decide on the CADA board.
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor, whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I, yeah, I'd prefer to go to CADA.
Okay.
So you're gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay, so they have a meeting next week then, and you're still gonna stay with, uh, the tourism, Steve?
Yeah, I am, yep. And then, uh, your other question, Councilman Kathy was on, I, I am staying in CNFR too, but you can still attend all of those meetings, because the mayor's the mayor here to help out on that.
You bet.
Bob, I don't think you're doing anything you don't do.
Well, they're all kind of involved as well.
I'm getting the invites now.
Couple of things on here, just for silly clarification purposes, I mean, Steve, or, sorry, not Steve, um, maybe just updating the date up here, because then like on the bottom left on the front, we've got K two morning radio show, I would assume that's gonna be Steve.
Yeah, a lot of these.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, okay, so never mind, so that probably seems to be moving.
It's more of an as-needed basis, the, uh, the, uh, radio show.
Yeah, well, a lot of this just exists. Like this one here, now, uh, that, the Toronto County Council of Governors.
I would just let Tom do that, he's here.
A couple of other things, so, like, on the front two pages, it shows me as the Contractors Licensing and Appeals Board, and I do make that meeting every month, but on all these back pages, it says that Ray's doing that one. If he's gonna do that going forward, then that's fine, um, I just, I do make those meetings.
You looking at this page?
That's new to the, to the Appeals Board, so if you want to stay on that.
Let's go off the front page, and let's not go off the back page.
Okay, and then the only other one that I can see on here was, they have yet to meet since I've been on council, but, um, the liquor advice, what are they called, the, the Toronto County Liquors?
The liquor dealers?
Whatever, we had decided after passing that liquor law that we wanted, um, an individual council to attend those meetings, and I agreed to attend those meetings, and I've touched base with them multiple times, and they haven't met yet, but that's probably one that we could add on here.
Gotcha.
We need to...
The liquor dealers?
Reach out to them, galleries in prison.
I've talked to them a couple of times, and they just, they haven't met, is what I've been told.
I think maybe if you guys can reach out to, find out what it is.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. So are we keeping, uh, council and, and so that one, liquor dealer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there any other changes that anybody can see?
Did you get somebody to volunteer for CATSI?
No.
I know that they had been pretty vocal in...
Means.
Mm-hmm.
Shoot me an email if anybody like wakes up tomorrow morning and says, hey, I want to be on the CATSI board, and in the meantime, we'll, uh, try and make sure that we have better attendance.
I, I could be an alternate for that one, but these are just not ideal, the financial institutional.
Mr. Mayor, we will, uh, make adjustments based on the feedback that we've gotten, and we will adjust that other sheet, that second sheet that breaks it down by person, and, uh, run it by you again next week and make sure we got it right. And, uh, in pre-meeting, if not, let us know what's the change.
And actually, if it's possible, could we, if you get it done ahead of time, maybe we can email that out there.
No problem.
And then if there's any changes that need to be made, or you want to see made, let's do that ahead of time so we're not, it'll be done before we get here.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay.
We will do that.
Anything else on the agenda set, or any of this? Okay, legislative need?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, we do have the dinner for the twenty-third, where we, uh, basically make the pitch to our, um, state delegation to let them know what our needs are legislatively and so on. Council helped, uh, set that agenda back in November, and so we will, you know, introduce that to the legislators this, uh, uh, next, within the next two weeks. Um, we, I don't think we've got a complete feel yet as to who can make it and so forth, and so if you would let Renee know where your calendar lies in regard to that possibility, that'd be very helpful, and I would certainly suggest, um, you know, we'll get those sheets out in front of you to kind of go over them and stuff like that, but use it as an opportunity to twist some arms and pat some backs and, uh, let them know where you're at with regard to the positions of the city, with regard to your position on other things that they might be thinking about. It's a nice opportunity, and so, um, would highly encourage your involvement if you, if you can. That's all.
Okay. Mayor, Steve, uh, WAM is twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth of February. Um, I think I've been pretty public about the fact that I'm not gonna be running for office in 2020, and, uh, and I have been the council's rep on, with WAM. I know you've heard me say this before, but the decisions that are made in our legislature, uh, the impact on our community is, uh, well, it, it, many of the things we discuss in here pale by comparison in their importance, and, uh, I, 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 I think we need a, we need a succession plan. I know Mike has shown some interest in WAM, um, but, uh, there have been times when Casper's not really been actively involved, and that's not a good thing, because we are the, Cheyenne and Casper are the two large cities, and we have to be actively involved, and, and these situations that go on down in the legislature are very malleable, and sometimes a, a conversation or two can make all the difference in terms of the outcome, and we're talking about a huge impact on our budget and our freedoms and, uh, and, and all of the issues that we've talked about repeatedly, um, as we've gone through our legislative agenda, so, uh, I just, I just strongly encourage you to consider getting down to Cheyenne for the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth of February. You know, you have to do this till Renee wants to go and should get it set up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, anxious as I am to get the food in the corner there, but, uh, you know, if you look at, uh, at these things, uh, at this agenda, there's a lot of what I would consider continuing education and, and training and stuff that is, is very valuable to council members. Last, uh, last February down there, there were things about, you know, basically about hiring, firing, promoting, demoting, you know, how to keep yourself out of trouble in terms of employment issues, a lot of really good educational thing, programs, in addition to what, uh, what Council and Powell's talking about. I would really urge everybody to attend the WAM meetings. I think if you did, you'd find out they're very, very profitable, good meetings to go to, and it's not just a junket to, you know, to, to go out of town for something.
There are towns in Casper where every single member of their council goes to.
And, and they're not only there, but they are there participating, obviously anxious to learn things and that stuff. It's not that they're just there having a party and screwing around.
Speaking of WAM as well, and the fact that Charlie's gonna be leaving, um, and we are needing somebody as a representative, all the time representative, I would actually recommend that whoever takes that position not be up for reelection this year.
Yeah.
Because we ran into that four years ago when I was vice mayor, and then didn't get reelected, and it put everything in a bit of a mess, so that we really need somebody that's not up for reelection in 2020, because at least you get two years of overlap on that.
I like that idea because I'm up for election.
So am I, but...
My pitch isn't so much find a replacement for me, my pitch is, everybody needs to be more involved.
But by the same token, you are the main, and have been the main contact, and when it comes to actual voting meetings, I think you're the one that has the vote.
I am on the board.
Exactly, and that's what I was getting at, is that particular position, but yes, I think everybody need, should be involved.
Okay, do council round the table?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Pacheco? Nothing. Councilman Bates?
Uh, DDA met last week, uh, I don't think there's anything, uh, major, uh, they did talk about the parking garage fees and are interested in our discussions that we'll be having two weeks from today, um, and if there's obviously any changes that we, and there's, the question as to who sets the fees, I guess, because they have the operating contract with us, but, uh, obviously, any changes that we recommend would affect their income, and so, um, and then some discussion about eventually getting to an electronic system, which of course is a high dollar. Um, they, uh, they're, they're running into some problems with the chiller, the cost of the chiller that they rent for the ice sheet, and, um, the cost, and, and the electricity costs are obviously significant, and so far, the combined costs have exceeded any revenue that they've received through the rentals and the use of the, of the ring, and so there's a discussion of, do we get out from under that by developing a long-range plan to purchase a, a chiller versus renting one? Um, talked a lot about the sidewalks, no cleaning and challenges with that, um, and then they, they had, just so everyone knows, they do have a long-term budget plan like any agency, and of course, they're interested in the wayfinding and, um, uh, making sure that they have the necessary funds to pay their staff long-term, so, um, there, there really has been a lot of turnover in that board, but it seems to be a pretty active group still, and pretty bullish on downtown Cal.
Councilman Kathy?
It's time to eat.
Yeah, just a very big thank you to Lefty's Barbecue, those were generous enough.
Yes. Okay, thank you to Lefty's Barbecue and...
I was gonna say tell them barbecue before they leave.
Oh, yeah, everybody get some food before you leave, and we'll go into special session, and I've only got you fifty minutes behind, so this will get better, I swear.
Actually, we have a special council meeting and then execs are sitting.
Let's take a break, so you guys can grab something real quick, and then we'll just go into special session meeting here in just a minute.
That's right, I was just...
Just two seconds. I don't know.
It's personality issue.
We could tell you about anywhere from twenty to...
We can tell you.
No, what I was gonna say is, no, by the way, I know, but, um...
What's the travel plan?
Is, is, you know, I think the one that we went to and shared, I didn't know, like, what, if we're planning on attending, I don't make money.
Sure. So, I'm sorry. I think they have like a business plan.
So we decided we're gonna get something to eat? Yeah.
Part of this.
Anything to, unless you're making the fifth cent permanent, allowing...
Yeah, so I'd say probably the biggest thing would be the, uh, membership dinner. I will be down there for this, and so, you know, maybe you'll accept a wage or whatever, but nonetheless, this would be the opportunity to have, to kind of get together.
Absolutely, and we're looking for a car, so that you don't have to take your own vehicle, and I think it's how it works out, so.
Big dogs got to eat, right?
We can make whatever we want.
No, I was just trying to figure out this work stuff.
Babysitting, that's a lot of stuff.
My staff are giving me this, I'm trying to like cushion.
Hey, yeah.
When you guys can do this, like, second off the microphone.
Pretty good, pretty good.
I just thought you'd love it.
Oh, I bet, I bet.
It's like a big issue, yeah.
Question for you, so you guys are getting ready to go into something, because if I could talk to you...
Well, that's good.
After this, about the ice plant, you, I had you quote it saying, if the plant goes down tomorrow, we're, we've got to pass it, so I would talk to you.
That's true.
So, after?
Yeah.
All right, cool.
Yeah, sort of.
I'm right.
I'm doing pretty good.
Everybody should make sure you know what you have there.
Can I talk to you about the historic plant?
Heck, yeah.
Okay.
All right, super.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We, uh, would you like some plates?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe just for silly clarification purposes.
Pretty sure that, uh, look, the barbecue.
Sounds like he would go down earlier that day, and then whoever...
We were talking about where you sit.
Mike, are you planning on going?
Yeah, yeah.
So, after the executive session, I'm gonna find a guy.
I figured, yeah.
Talk about the transition.
Steve, this is...
Sure, sure, okay.
I know, that was, my legs have changed, but I think it's, but I'm not having a big old ones, is, what do you say about your power link? What's that, because I wanted there to say, hold on, like, six minutes.
No, order, food's more than that.
And obviously, if you do, you know, just get highways, and which one do you address? Yeah, like, plan and stuff.
Yeah, you know, you should go in a week.
Yeah, no, I went to, I was twenty grand.
Nope, nope, the twenty, they're gonna say if they, they're in direct, you can see if they can find it.
Okay.
And, okay, I'll try to make it quick, five minutes.
Okay, all right, sounds good. And Councilman Kathy, after this, I would, after the executive session, I wanna make a chat with you about the, uh...
I'm in favor of them.
Yeah.
Every Tuesday.
And, and talk to you a little bit about, about what you call...
No, we haven't.
You know, keep it very careful.
Okay, perfect.
To put on television.
Right, right, right.
That is true. You wake up in the middle of the night, suddenly you can't find it.
I was gonna call you, so I'll just pull over.
Yeah.
Make the back budget balance.
It'll be for good.
You're paying the fairways, you can approve, and it's not something that, I think it was looking at.
Well, uh, yeah, right after, and, right after.
And I got a call from Amber.
Goodness, is that what coming to you?
She said, they had to come in at ten o'clock.
So how's your deal going on the bus?
So at least I know, at least I have no more confusion, I love you guys, it's so easy to miss some things, because you go from question to question.
Oh, I know that.
Come on in again sometime.
At the regular meetings, taking a shot of the board, and then what the package say.
He's not somebody you would want to shoot.
I, I, I don't listen to, I used to listen all the time, but I'm not.
The news is...
You're good, how are you doing?
Hey, uh, do you think, Sid?
Well, you got to be great, but I mean, I'm not gonna listen to you for half hours to listen to two minutes of news.
I'm sure he would.
Hey, uh, do you think Sid? Ever want to do a story on the, uh?
I'm sure he would.
He's actually very nice.
I, I turned it to the PC, so they can hear us, but they're just looking at computer screens. To give you guys some privacy while you eat your ribs.
Uh, when is that phone? Yes. Yep, I did, too. Mister Bass?
It's open to press, yeah.
Hey, what are your priorities this concession? The other big thing is the city. And, obviously, I forgot it even existed, so I'm forgetting it exists. Most people probably don't know it exists. So I want to do a story this. Yeah. Who in the city would be the first in, who would know most, or be the best candidate?
We leave the thirty-first at like five a.m. So fun.
No, 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 we're, we're good.
I've tried that before.
I think, because this is four, so that was four of us.
So we should be okay. Uh, we're going to Legoland and Universal. You were going there, Scotland, right?
I want to do a story on the, uh.
When are you going, Scotland?
I went to, uh, obviously, the current ice, ice plants. Sounds like.
Cause they need a chaperone. I got my paper filled up at night, they, the moment they say.
How old is that?
Where is that paper?
It's thirty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, pretty close.
Anything that's older than me?
It, it, it probably came.
We haven't figured out the date, yes, it's gonna be in Houston sometime in March.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Well, there's a lot of people.
The stock show?
Stock show. The Red Center came with the building.
And we're trying to pick which.
That's the one you wanna see, right?
And also, I could like to see.
That's one of the ones.
Yeah, but the problem is the boat.
Our son's birthday is seventeen.
No, thanks, you just know that's, all the hours, that's the, uh. It sounds like mammoth. You're asking, obviously.
I've been to Denver.
But I'll have to break the rules, we can't. We lost the ice right here.
Yeah.
There's a persuasive argument. I was one of those things that sounded good.
Well, you know, you got a million dollar donation. Yeah, so you get a three million dollar project for two.
No, my wife got me.
You know, we asked a few more questions about.
No, I was just.
The ice events. It might have been a parent. Originally, we were told it's, it's just a learning curve. There's more places.
Looking at this.
Yeah. And they tried to play master ball, and we could start slipping on the court.
I couldn't be the boss.
Yeah, later.
Hugh.
Hugh?
We're ready to go, Huges.
I know.
They remind me of the kids. Remind me of the kids in the backseat.
He's looking at me.
He looks right at me.
The nickname won't stay.
Yep, uh, Flur has something to bring up real quick.
Okay, I just was wondering if anybody had any more of the little sheets with the financial disclosure or the WAM registration, if you wanted to attend or legislative? Anybody has anything they haven't handed in, I can grab that really quickly? Thank you.
Okay, I'll now call the January fourteenth, twenty twenty special session, or special council meeting to order. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion by a minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Johnson.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Cathy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion by a minute action to appoint two members of council to Central Wyoming Regional Water Joint Powers Board for a three-year term, expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
I move to reappoint me, uh, Mayor Steve Freel and Councilmember Cathy to the Central Wyoming Regional Water Joint Powers Board.
And let me correct that, that is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, just the one it would expire. Councilman Checco just moved it?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Butts, any abstentions?
I will abstain.
I will abstain. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding personnel, therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. And at the conclusion of the executive session, to reconvene to special meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this special meeting.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, seconded by Council, was that Councilman Powell? There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded in that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The greater than two-thirds majority of the council present vote in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned into executive session.